Regular meeting at the San Rafael City Council for Tuesday, June 21st.
Regular meeting at the San Rafael City Council for Tuesday.
Regular meeting at the San Rafael City Council for Tuesday. Regular meeting at the San Rafael City Council for Tuesday. Present, all five of us are here. So, welcome to the city council meeting. If you haven't tuned in recently, we are in a hybrid format. So, we are both in person and people can participate virtually, which the city clerk will talk to that in a moment. As always, a huge thank you and shout out to our staff that keep our city running so beautifully and so smoothly every single day. So, some interesting things since we last met, there was an election for the Marin County Board of Supervisors. Damon Connolly is not seeking reelection, so Mary Sackett was elected in his place. The way that it works is she actually won't be sworn in until January of 2023. So, we'll continue to work with Damon until then and welcome Mary into her new role. And just for folks as a reminder, so we have, we're really lucky here in San Rafael. We have three different supervisors that have different parts of San Rafael. We have Mary Sackett, we have Dennis Redoni, and we have Katie Rice. So, she will join that group. What else? Today is Summer Solstice. For those who are watching us at home and sweating and it's 100 degrees, come on down to City Hall. It's air conditioned here. So, we are all very happy to be sitting in here. In addition, there are other great summer events that are going on. Dine Under the Lights on Thursday night, so check that out. Our local baseball team, the Pacifics, have started to play. In fact, they have a game tonight. Can't make it tonight, but we're gonna make it to another game. And then finally, on Fourth Street, we have the Second Friday Art Walk. So, there's something for everyone. When you want to eat, watch baseball, or enjoy art, San Rafael is the place to go. And when it's 100 degrees, as I said, come on down to San Rafael. So, with that, I would like to include a land acknowledgement in the opening comments. Present-day San Rafael is located in the traditional lands of the coastal Miwok people, and we recognize this history as well as those who still reside here. We have a super full agenda tonight, and I will turn it over to the city clerk who can share how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, we'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish-language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel now through the completion of Agenda Item 6A. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking the interpretation icon in Zoom, in the Zoom toolbar. It does look like a globe. And we posted a link to the Zoom meeting in the description of the video on YouTube. If you're attending in person, you can see me and I'll help you get set up with a device so you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And I'm going to invite Paloma to repeat what I just stated in Spanish.
Si, hola, gracias. Antes de comenzar, nos gustaría anunciar que la reunión del Consejo Municipal de esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea y consecutiva en español proporcionada por intérpretes calificados en el canal de español. Ahora, hasta la finalización del punto 6A de la agenda, se mira el Zoom. Puede unirse al canal en español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de herramientas de Zoom, que aparece un globo terráculo. Y hemos publicado un enlace a la reunión del Zoom en la descripción del video en YouTube. Se asistirá en persona. Venga a verme y le configuraré un dispositivo para que pueda escuchar la reunión en español. Como recordatorio, pedimos que todos los participantes de esta noche hablen lentamente para permitir que nuestro intérprete exprese sus comentarios de manera efectiva. Gracias.
Thank you. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and anyone who is unable to make it to the council chambers can still provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and using the meeting ID 899-2635-9885, or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If commenting over the phone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard the notification, or once you, once you hear the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to let us know when you'd like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email us at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. And for those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, you can approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period and display it on the podium as a projector where there's a two-minute timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. For public comments not related to this evening's agenda, you can fill out a public comment card, which is found on the lobby table, or right here. And you're invited, although not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We're also offering closed captioning for this evening. It's our first, first round. And if you'd like to utilize that feature, you can select the live transcript button on Zoom and enable that feature there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. First up is open time for public expression. Actually, first I want to say thank you to Paloma and Gilberto for helping with the translation tonight. We really appreciate that. Remind, keep reminding each other to speak a little bit slower. So, open time for public expression. Are there any comments from the public on an item not on tonight's agenda? First off, look in the chambers. If so, you can come on down. Not seeing any. Is there anyone virtually?
There is. I do see one hand raised.
Okay, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Hi, everyone. This is Christine Paquette. I am the Executive Director at the St. Vincent de Paul Society of Marin County. And I would just like to take a second to thank you, the city, for the opportunity to apply to work with you on the Encampment Resolution Services contract. This contract would allow us to devote two full-time case managers to assist encampment participants to secure permanent supportive housing. So, we're excited for this potential, and I just want to let you know that if you want to contact me about it, I invite you to reach out to me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And actually, that item will be on our consent calendar.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no additional public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and turn it over to the city manager for his report out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Are we gonna do the public comment after? And together. Okay, sorry. We've changed it a little bit. So, go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and council members. We have, as you mentioned, we have a longer-than-usual agenda tonight, so I'm gonna keep my comments brief and skip usual announcements. I just wanted to bring up a few kind of personal comings and goings from the city that I wanted to mention tonight. The first is that the U.S. Department of State runs and fully funds a fellowship program that they call YSELE, which is not the best acronym, but it stands for Young Southeast Asian Leaders Institute. And San Rafael was selected to host a fellow four-month this summer. And Lita Chon is in our audience back there who's waving. And she just arrived on Saturday from Cambodia, where she is a sustainability professional working on climate change and food scraps and composting and all sorts of different things as it relates to sustainability. As I mentioned, she's gonna be with us for a month, and she's gonna be looking at SB 1383 and some of the organics recycling things that are going on in California right now. So, I wanted to say welcome to Lita. This is not only her first city council meeting, but it's her first week in the United States. So, all of this is new from a governmental standpoint. We're really happy that she is with us, and we hope to learn from each other while she's here. Also, this is the last city council meeting. I was thinking today for two directors that started within a month of each other in 2016, about six years ago. Bill Guerin and Danielle O'Leary, Public Works and Economic Development. After about six years, Bill is retiring, and Danielle is moving on to a private sector job. So, I'm going to save my teary speech for like a goodbye party, but I just didn't want to not recognize the fact that it was their last meeting. They both have spent so many meetings in this council chambers on so many different issues and have always been so committed and professional in everything they've done. And they're both leaving such a long list of accomplishments. If you add up all of those things that happened in those very chambers and everything else, it's so much to be proud of. So, I know, I think I saw Mitra was here. She's gonna make sure that Bill, that make sure that this is Bill's last meeting, and Bill's wife is here. So, and, but I did also want to say that there'll be more times for goodbyes, not trying to do a presentation or a big deal tonight. Just wanted to acknowledge that it was their last meeting. And both of them happen to live in San Rafael, so they're really not going anywhere, and we don't have to say goodbye because they'll still be nearby. So, just wanted to bring up those few little comings and goings of personnel, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember reports, as always. I know my colleagues are out there very busy. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you to Bill and to Danielle. It's hard to think of it, it's gonna be your last meeting. I attended, I'll just keep it really short. I was invited to the Chamber Leadership graduating class to say a few words. And congratulations to April, who I know is part of that group, that cohort. So, thank you for participating in that. And I also, the MWPA board meeting, the MWPA group is actually gonna be moving from their Southern Marin location to a location at Marin Commons, which is on Las Camos. Larger office space as well as a large conference room space that eventually we'll be able to have our board meetings. But it's also gonna be a place for any of the participating JPA cities and towns to use as, as meeting space. So, that's, that's it for me.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my remarks brief tonight. On Tuesday, June 14th, along with City Manager Schutz and Lauren Davini, we met with Amazon Leadership from their External Affairs and Government Relations, as well as Community Operations from Northern California. We met with them because there's been a pattern of hillside stuck vehicles, often larger vehicles. And for a series of meetings we've had, have requested that they come up with some solutions. They did respond to this. They've committed to finally procuring 10 vehicles to bring into hillside communities in San Rafael to make sure that we mitigate that happenstance. Beyond just it being inconvenient, it does create a safety condition if it should coincide with an evacuation need or a medical emergency or something that requires first responders. So, I appreciate Amazon's partnership to help make our community more safe, and we should be expecting to see that in the next month. I will also add that they did clarify that the drivers that do visit our community are, tend to be the same drivers for each regional unit. So, it is not random. They do have built familiarity with our community. So, just wanted to make sure that we're getting the word out and appreciate the partnership from Amazon.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I will also keep my comments brief. I attended the meetings of the San Rafael Sanitation District Board, as well as the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Routine Matters. Were discussed at both places. The Locklomen Oversight Committee has been, committee meeting has been moved to next week. And the final meeting, the, the leadership of the MCC MC Water Group will be later this week on Thursday.
Thank you. Councilmember Yerens Giladi.
Yeah, good evening. So, I attended the, the monthly Economic Development Subcommittee meeting with Danielle. And, and I also echo Vice President Kurtz. It's going to be really hard to think about you two not coming to the council meetings and all the work that we are doing because you are involving most of my committees. So, in fact, I just had a Zoom meeting with Bill today as well. So, we're definitely going to miss you, but happy that you are here in San Rafael. So, one of the items is the street theories that we are going to talk during the meeting today. So, it's always an amazing committee. I really enjoy it with, with the different organizations. Also, there was some data from all the businesses in San Rafael and the property taxes. Really thankful for, for all our businesses that they really, you know, thrive here. And just a little detail that over 62% of the businesses are, is in East San Rafael, so I'm very proud of that, too. I attended a meeting with Mayor Kate and, again, Director Bill Guerin and PG&E about the lighting project for San Rafael. And I'm really excited of that partnership that is, since we are going to see some results earlier. So, that's always good. Also, attended the Multicultural Center grand opening. What I give to the community, it is located on 709 Fifth Avenue at Tamil Falls. And I think it's going to be a really great central location. The installation is specifically for like the radio that they have in there. They are amazing, and they are open to the community. So, I really invite you all to go and visit. Bless you. Attended the city council retreat on Thursday, so that was always great with all the council. Well, almost all. And we just had like an East San Rafael parking meeting this afternoon, so that's going well. Really appreciative of Voces del Canal, in particular, Darlene C. has gathered like a lot of data from residents that I think is going to help us a lot, thinking of some solutions. And that is for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, welcome, Lita. Nice to have you here tonight. And we, as you may know, we've been having community conversations, so each of the council members and myself has had them in person. And I just had my in-person one last week. It was pretty well-attended, and we had a great dialogue about issues that the neighborhoods are concerned about, which there were, there were a lot and far ranging, but it was a great conversation. And people want to participate in future community conversations. You can go to the city website. And on the calendar, they are listed, the ones that are coming up in the fall. I wanted to, plus one on the Multicultural Center of Marin opening. I was honored to be able to say a few words there. It's in the heart of San Rafael. They have been fantastic partners for connecting with our community and being a trusted messenger when we want to work with our community. And their site, to Micah's point, their, their building is gorgeous. So, look forward to increased partnerships with them. I'm your representative on SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. We approved the budget. In June, we added 10 more trips, so slowly adding trips back since the start of COVID. On Wednesday, June 15th, it was a new post-COVID high ridership number of 1,700. And then there was a new high total weekly riders of nearly 10,0900. So, it's slowly coming back, and people have used it to take SMART to the ferry and then go in to watch the Warriors. So, there was that. Yeah, and the Giants. Right. Yep. And the Giants. Yep, supporting our teams. And so, those are mine. And again, Danielle and Bill, thank you. When we close tonight's meeting, we all should give you a shout out as part of the adjournment this evening. So, with that, I will go see if there's any public expression, any public comment on these, the council member or city manager's report. Don't see anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to make a comment?
I don't see any hands raised right now, and I'll give everyone a moment and remind you that if you're calling in, you can press star nine. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be held from the consent calendar for my colleagues? Looking to the right, looking to the left. Okay. With, with that, I will open public comment on the consent calendars, items 4A through, wow, 4K. Anyone in the chambers? Not seen any. Is there any virtual public comment?
I do see one hand raised.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is John, John Reynolds, a member of Christian Imitance Church, part of the Canal. The issue, the, the item on the agenda, the consent calendar, it has to do with, it has to do with giving $467,000 to St. Vincent de Paul to continue to work with the homeless in the encampment. I had heard, and maybe it's not happening, I'm just raising that issue because what's gonna happen when the people go out of the encampment? Is St. Vincent de Paul still gonna facilitate getting them into permanent supportive housing or shelter? I suppose they're gonna continue to do that, but how are they gonna do that? Where are they gonna go after the encampment? That's my question. If that's happening, I understood it was gonna happen at the end of June, June. So, maybe get some update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Okay, I'll close the public comment, and I will respond to Mr. Reynolds that at our July 5th meeting. Thank you, city managers confirming, we will have an agenda item and in-depth discussion around the homelessness approach that San Rafael is taking and around the service support area. And I'm happy, John, I will email you as well to check in because he, happy to connect before then. So, with that, I would request a motion on the consent calendar.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. Thank you. Moved in second. And real call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Aye. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yerens Giladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion, that motion carries 5-0. We are going to start the public hearing. The first item is the eviction moratorium through September of 2022. And I will turn it over to staff. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. I'm Alexis Capitanian, Housing Analyst in the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'm presenting for your consideration an urgency ordinance to prevent evictions in San Rafael for non-payment of rent due to, due to financial stress related to COVID-19. So, residents continue to experience substantial financial impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic that threaten their housing stability. And the statewide eviction moratorium that is currently in place will expire on June 30th, 2022. The proposed local ordinance prevents evictions and late fees for tenants financially impacted by COVID-19 and would be effective July 1st through September 30th, 2022. This timeline aligns with the continuing distribution of funds through the Marin County Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or ERAP, which is still processing applications from landlords and renters facing financial hardships due to the COVID-19 pandemic. ERAP has a current balance of approximately $8.5 million, and the county has recently accelerated distribution of funds and anticipates that the remaining $8.5 million will be administered by September 30th of 2022. The county has paid out about $2 million in the last two weeks, a pace which would put the county on target to spend down remaining funds by September 30th. Extending the eviction moratorium to this same September 30 date helps prevent tenants from being evicted while the county processes their application for assistance. This morning, the Marin County Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to adopt a similar eviction moratorium in unincorporated Marin County, and Novato and Fairfax have also expressed interest in such an ordinance. We have received comments from the public in support of the eviction moratorium, along with requests for additional actions, including providing support for tenants and small landlords, and enacting a just cause eviction ordinance with specific provisions. Tonight's council action addresses the eviction moratorium. But just briefly, we'll note that the county has been the unit of government distributing federal and state dollars for rental assistance, and the city has a just cause eviction ordinance in place. Should the council wish, staff can reexamine it in the future, likely within the Canal Policy Working Group. For tonight, staff is recommending that city council adopt an urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium through September 30th, 2022 on evictions of tenants residing in residential rental units in San Rafael who are experiencing COVID-19 financial distress. And Director Ali Judice and I are available now for your questions.
Thank you, Alexis. Questions? And Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you, Alexis, for the, for the report. I heard in your comments that $2 million was dispersed in the last two weeks. I think we've all seen a fact pattern that was leading us to believe that it was a lot slower than that, but that sounds optimistic. Do we believe that that would, that rate would be sustained for the next three months? That pace, are we getting reports from the county that pace feels consistent for the next, say, 90 days?
That is what the county has indicated to us, yes.
Got it. Do we have any insights as to what might, say, derail the processes that they've created? In other words, have they achieved that through increased staff or automation to get to that number?
So, hi, the county provided an update to the Board of Supervisors this morning and mentioned in particular that increasing staffing has helped and also... Um, and also they, I think a while back, switched their portal, um, to a different, uh, more effective portal and that it took some time for them to get everybody kind of reregistered. And so now they're, they're up and running and things are moving more smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Vice Mayor? Yeah, go ahead.
I probably have more comments than questions. But in terms of adding on additional staff, and I haven't had an opportunity to listen to the supervisors meeting, because this is really owned and managed by the county and doing that distribution. What we don't want, we want to protect San Rafael, that we don't, and our residents who are on the waitlist. We want to ensure that they're, see, this is the comment, not the question.
There's a question in there somewhere.
There is a question. The question is, is there any consideration of additional, the county having additional staff? So we're not using September thirtieth as a deadline, but actually the distribution of the funds would be earlier than September thirtieth.
So is the, is the question, do you think that will, do, do I think the funds will be distributed before September thirtieth?
Faster.
If, if the idea, the, yeah, sorry, it was, it was convoluted in there. The, the idea of if adding two additional staff helps, you know, facilitate the funds going out faster, would it be faster to add two more? And so right now, the deadline that they're looking at is by September thirtieth. And the eviction moratorium is by September thirtieth. And I feel I would rather have the distribution of the funds be tomorrow, if possible, because that's what, we need to get the funds in the hands and not have September thirtieth. And so I'd like, if it's possible, and again, this may have been addressed at the supervisors' meeting, is, is there a potential of increasing addition, you know, having additional staff at the county level to increase the speed of distribution of the funds?
Um, good question. I did not hear that question addressed at the Board of Supervisor meeting, but I'm happy to follow up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, oh, Councilmember Bushy?
Yeah. A couple of quick questions following up on, on those, um, primarily focused on the county's role here. Um, I think we all agree that this distribution program has not been a model of efficiency. Um, and the, um, focus on September thirtieth, I, I think makes sense. Let's get this done. Um, and if they are on a track where they can actually do that, let's stay on that. Um, my question is, um, has the county synced up with, um, the September thirtieth, um, deadline? Have they extended their moratorium as well?
They have. They did this just this morning, actually.
Okay, fantastic. Last question. Has the county also, um, uh, thought about or perhaps discussed, um, some sort of retrospective review of this two-year process and its inefficiencies?
That was not mentioned, but I'm also happy to follow up on that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah? Thank you. I don't have any additional questions that hadn't already been asked. So with that, uh, I will open the public comment on this item. Does anyone in the chamber like to address this item? Yeah, come on down, come on down.
And also, this will be interpreted consecutively, so Pluma.
Okay. It doesn't sound like it's on. Hold on one momento. Yeah.
Muy buenas noches. Ah, mi nombre es Marina Palma y soy miembro de Grupo Voluntario Voces del Canal. Quiero comenzar dándole las gracias al señor Bill Guerin por todo lo que está haciendo y a la concejal también, a Micah, por todo lo que están haciendo por nuestra comunidad. En cuanto viene a las rentas, este, quiero este que por favor tengan en cuenta que la recomendación de septiembre treinta es algo que trabajaría para muchas familias. Nosotros en Voces del Canal vamos de casa en casa, ah, dando, informando a las familias. Y hay muchísimas que todavía creo que ya no pueden aplicar. Y este, y, y he sabido que el condado no manda, no manda la ayuda pronto, se están tardando mucho. Quiero tomar la oportunidad también para pedirles que si en algún caso este, podría haber una sesión también para que tengamos, ah, control de renta. Porque eso, eso de verdad está, está muy este, ah, es, está, es, es, es un desafío muy grande en la comunidad de Canal. Hay personas que todavía no están trabajando. Esto, esto está causando muchas, este, ah, ah, la salud mental está muy afectada en todo esto. Y este, pedimos que también este el condado, por medio de ustedes, si pudieran existir otra clase de fondos para ayudar a todas estas personas que están atrasadísimas todavía en pagar su renta, estaríamos muy agradecidas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Yes, good evening. Uh, my name is Marina. I'm a volunteer from Voices of Del Canal. Uh, first I want to thank Bill, the, the, uh, council and, and Micah also, uh, for what you do. I would like to talk about the, uh, September thirtieth due date. Uh, we do go home to home to inform the families in all the county about the funds. And, but it doesn't seem that they are receiving the help from the county as they need to receive it. Also, I would like to ask the county and, and you that if we could also get some funds to help paying for the rent for the people that are behind due to COVID. And there are gonna be other problems like we are presenting right now. Like, um, the, the help they need in, in, in funds, they are causing them with mental health issues. I will ask you to help and, uh, and please, uh, give them some more time also, uh, to request more funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to address the council on this issue?
Uh, may, may I? I, I think one of the things he was mentioning as well, well, it's about rent control. Um, at the end of her conversation, so because I think the translation was missing that part, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to, uh, address the council? I don't see anyone else in the chamber, so is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on the eviction moratorium through September twenty twenty-two?
I do see one hand raised. And just a reminder for anyone, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. Or if you're calling in, you can press star nine to have your hand raised. Looks like two hands now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Erin Burnett with Canal Alliance. And I'm here tonight to urge the city of San Rafael to extend the eviction moratorium for our residents who are still struggling to recover from the financial impacts of the pandemic. I appreciate that the city council is taking this extension into consideration. And I thank you all for your commitment addressing this issue in addition to the perhaps larger issue of not having sufficient affordable housing in San Rafael. Regarding affordable housing, uh, due to a recent report that came to our attention, uh, from the California Housing Partnership, that renters in Marin County need to earn fifty-two dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, three point five times the state minimum wage to afford the average monthly asking rent of twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. This is simply not sustainable. However, I believe with your continued commitment, San Rafael can exceed its long-term goals of creating affordable housing. Through public and private acquisition of land, cooperation with private developers and partnership with CBOs to purchase buildings for the purpose of providing affordable housing, I am hopeful that San Rafael is on track to housing its low-income residents and working class. While city council's commitment to affordable housing deserves credit, tenants struggling to recover from the pandemic simply do not have time to wait for these measures. Canal Alliance employees have worked tirelessly with the County Rental Assistance Program to get these funds to landlords, but time has not been on their side. We are seeing too many tenants losing their housing despite having applied to the program. This goes against the interpretation and intention of the program, which is to keep people housed. Furthermore, according to the county, there are still a hundred and thirty San Rafael residents on the waitlist for ERAP. A moratorium of evictions for inability to pay rent will allow for this important safety net to work as intended. We also urge you to consider further measures to address the crisis that low-income tenants, predominantly seniors, persons with disabilities.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you Canal Alliance for the work that they have done with the county on this program. Is there anyone else virtually? Oh, okay.
I'll need to unmute. Sorry, dear, I just unmuted you or muted you again. If you could please unmute. I'm going to move to the next. Oh, here we are. We're ready for your comments.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, buenas tardes, mi nombre es, mi nombre es Darlene Ruiz, soy del grupo Voces del Canal. Y bueno, nosotros como grupo, eh, escuchamos, eh, siempre los problemas de la, los problemas de la comunidad. Y uno de los problemas más grandes ahorita son, eh, el alto costo de la renta aquí en nuestra comunidad. Créanme que es imposible, eh, pagar tan alto costo. La otra cosa es también que algunas personas no han podido trabajar bien por, eh, el problema del COVID. Actualmente sigue el COVID. Y la otra cuestión es que también los productos, eh, de la comida están muy altos. Ahorita está muy caro todo y la gasolina. Entonces, todo esto, eh, viene a causar un grave problema para nosotros, los de la comunidad del Canal. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
I'll unmute Pluma.
Yes, uh, sí, quería, this, uh, I just wanted to say I'm also a volunteer at the Voices of El Canal. And, and I, I wanted to say that as well, you know, the, uh, due to COVID, uh, we are suffering on paying rent and, and we also are behind our rent. We want you to please, uh, help us about paying, uh, the, um, with the funds and also, uh, we need funds to, uh, with the ordinance of paying for rent control. And I'm sorry, the interpreter missed all that because I switched to the Spanish channel. So I missed part of it. So if I could get some help.
Was she interpreting or was she?
Were you interpreting?
Asking for help.
Pluma, were you interpreting or are you asking for this, are you asking personally for the Spanish channel?
No, no, I was asking, I'm sorry, I was asking for help because I changed to the Spanish channel. I switched with Gilberto and I, I was, uh, not, uh, exactly, uh, listening. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay. Network.
Thank you. So were we going to switch the interpreters?
I was going to be, I was going to be toggling. I'll toggle you, Pluma, just, just so you know. I'll go ahead and be toggling between seven thirty and seven forty-five, so probably as soon as this comment is complete.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to add that.
You've already, I'm sorry, you've already commented.
I think she was going to complete, complete the comment, which had been missed.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that my colleague, Darlene Briz, she mentioned that, uh, uh, the basic products are so expensive that many people in the community cannot even buy them. A lot of people are still not working and we are in high demand of assistance for, um, of rental assistance.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional comments, um, online? Okay.
I'm going to actually take a moment and toggle. Allison, Pluma, you'll be going into the Spanish channel. Gilberto, you'll be coming over the primary channel. We do have two hands raised.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Suzie Dershowitz. I'm a resident of San Rafael. Um, and just want to thank the council for taking up this important issue and express my strong support for extending the eviction moratorium to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, it's absolutely essential in order to keep renters housed in our community who are still suffering from the impacts of the pandemic. Um, I work on affordable housing, renter protections, anti-displacement and equitable land use policy as an attorney and as a policy advocate. Um, so thank you for your consideration and, and thank you for your time on this really important matter.
Thank you for your comments.
Cruz.
Uh, sí, buenas tardes, me escuchan?
Yes.
Okay, muy buenas tardes. Antes que nada, muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad de participar. Eh, soy Cruz Vargas, eh, uh, soy parte de Voces de Canal y yo apoyo a la extensión de la mandatoria hasta el treinta de septiembre. Ya que hay muchas, uh, muchas personas que se han quedado sin pagar la renta todavía y no les han resuelto la ayuda que se les había prometido. Gracias.
Thank you. Is it Gilberto now?
Yeah, Gilberto.
Hi, yes, this is Gilberto, the interpreter. Hi, my name is Cruz Vargas. I want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I'm also representing Voices of the Community. And I am really actually pleading for more help. And we want you to, uh, expand the September thirtieth moratorium. And because nobody can pay the rent in the canal, we need a lot of help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, no, of course.
You know, this is John Reynolds. Again, I live in the canal. I'm not there right now, but, uh, the Voces del Canal are, represent their need. Canal Community Alliance represents their need. We had four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to St. Vincent de Paul's to help the homeless community. And that's good. We appreciate that. Whatever you can do to provide renter protection to people who live in crowded conditions in the canal would be very helpful. Extend that beyond September, maybe. But access those funds that we really need to support these people that, and their families are working people and they're, uh, needing food and other services there. So, uh, work with them, the Canal Community Alliance and the Voces del Canal to move forward, uh, to address those needs. A hundred and thirty people are still not got the funds for their, their landlords or for themselves. We need to be right on on this and, and in detail. Go forth to help these hundred and thirty people and others that are facing difficulties there, their families, their children. Please do that. I really support Voces del Canal and the Canal Community Alliance in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment.
Yep.
I see no additional public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for further comments. I didn't hear any additional questions in the input. I heard more comments. Um, so I will open up to my colleagues for comments. I'll start with the vice mayor. And any additional questions? Do you have any?
No additional questions. Um, I am, I've been informed from others in the community around that there are loopholes to the eviction moratorium. Um, and I think we just need to continue to be aware of those and, and how that, how that's impacting the community as well. But I fully support doing the eviction moratorium. It's not, to me, it's, it's important to have this safety net, but it's not addressing the real problem, which is that distribution of funds. It's other aspects of how to support the community. So, um, anything that we can do to help the county with the urgency around would be, would be, um, I think really important for us to do. Um, and again, it's, it's really, the focus has to be on getting those funds distributed, not using September thirtieth as a date, but really. but really using tomorrow. Like, what does that look like to really push that timing? Forty percent of the applicants on the waitlist are San Rafael residents. And I do hope, I guess there's a question in here, is if we can get specific reporting for San Rafael on the waitlist, obviously not individuals, but I mean, in terms of those numbers, how does that get worked through? Because I think from some of the stories I've heard of people incurring so much debt, in order to support the application, there has to be the matching funds between the renter and the landlord. And that's great, but to get those matching funds, people have taken out additional loans, which have now increased the percentage to pay back. So in addition, it's just getting exponentially more difficult to support that. So absolutely support the eviction moratorium. Again, I see it as a safety net that I hope we don't have to, you know, go to. I'd rather address the real root causes than the real root problems.
Thank you. Over this way, Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, I support the moratorium 100%. This is, I believe, like with COVID, the government trying to move quickly to allocate a lot of funds to the people that they need the most and then putting it in the county's hands was a little bit like, not unfair, but I understand from the county side, you know, that it was a big struggle suddenly having so much money to distribute. It has been a long time and people are definitely suffering. As they were mentioning, you know, from Voces del Canal, it is a neighborhood that was already impacted before COVID. With COVID, everything has been worse. And as Vice Mayor Kurtz was mentioning, this is like a snowball. The dead is really growing. Some of the speakers were mentioning the cost of the food right now, the cost of the gas, in addition to everything else. People are still not working, you know, completely like before COVID. There is a lot of COVID cases, so I fully support it. And also, if there is anything we can do from the city to help the county, I know that some of our CBOs have been really helping with that. But, so I really fully support this as a way to keep families at home. We know that if they are not at home, they are going to become unhoused. And then it's extremely hard to get them back on their feet. So I support it 100%.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I wholeheartedly support the proposed ordinance. And in addition, I think we should use every informal means at our disposal to encourage the county to execute the distribution as soon as possible.
Thank you. Well-stated. Councilmember Hill.
I like my colleagues. I support the urgency ordinance. The alternative would be devastating to our community. This is a single action. There's clearly a larger journey ahead of us to ensure quality of life for every member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll close by saying what's being considered tonight is an emergency ordinance. And just for clarification for our community, in general, usually ordinances require 30 days and two hearings. As an emergency ordinance, it would require a four-fist vote and it would go in. And I'm hearing, we haven't voted yet, but it sounds like it's going to pass. It would go into effect immediately on July 1st, as soon as the other one expires. So I just wanna point that out. So this is government moving fast. Believe it or not, this is us moving fast. And I concur with what my colleagues have said. We did receive a letter from the Marin Realtors Association, so we will reach out to them. I think they had a counter position to the input that we received tonight, but they were not in favor of it. But as we've heard, there is such a great need and it's to really match getting the county's existing ordinance that they just passed today and trying to get that $36 million out the door. And so this is, and I wanna clarify, it's an extension of an existing moratorium program. We're not adding anything else. It's what we had originally passed. And it makes all the sense in the world, being that that money is not out the door yet. So I know our staff will continue to work with county and encourage them. It'd be great to not have to wait till September 30th. And we are also grateful to the county for continuing to work on this because they are the providers of this fund and they are the ones that are making the program happen. So we'll continue to support them in that way. So with that, Councilmember Micah, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'm super happy. I make a motion to adopt an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Rafael pursuant to California Government Code Section 36937B barring evictions in the City of San Rafael through September 30th, 2022 due to the public health emergency arising from COVID-19.
Thank you. So second, moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Lorenz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero and does clear the four-fist threshold. Thank you, Alexis, for that presentation. The next, we got applause. For people that couldn't hear it, we got applause. The next agenda item is the Canal Community-Based Transportation Plan. And I see Assistant DPW Director April Miller. Are you the one that is presenting?
I'm gonna introduce.
You're gonna introduce. Okay. Nice to see you, April.
Yeah, nice to see you too. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember, for having me tonight. As Mayor Kate said, I'm April Miller. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. So we're here tonight to approve the Canal Community-Based Transportation Plan. This is truly a community effort and it took everybody involved. Special thanks to all the community partners, Councilmember Lorenz Galati's staff, to all the hard work put together for this plan. One update I wanted to give is that from this process, one of the comments we received was on lighting. And so we found out from our contractors today that as of today, we replaced 35 lights in the canal. And that's on Canal Street, Larkspur, Novato, Hoag, Fairfax, and Sonoma. So we really wanna hear feedback from the community on if the lights, if they're seeing them as brighter and what their feelings are on the lights that we've replaced. We're gonna continue to work on that, but just wanted to give an update that we replaced those today. All right, so I have our consultant here today, so I just wanna introduce Taylor McAdams. She is the Senior Transportation Planner for Fair &amp; Pierce.
Welcome, Taylor. Yep, there you go. Thank you.
There you go. Yes, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Very excited to be here. We just heard a lot of great things about some of the community groups that we worked with. They are very busy. So the Community-Based Transportation Plan is something that is a regional effort. They're done in communities around the Bay Area. And the Canal actually did a Community-Based Transportation Plan, CBTP, I'm going to use that acronym, in 2006. And so this time around, it was an update to that plan. You won't be surprised to hear that many of the issues were the same, but it is a new transportation context now. So we had a lot of partners in this. It was a quick process, kind of just, again, it was an update. So we started in January, really fully got kind of all of the stakeholders together, looked at existing conditions, kind of made a long list of issues and opportunities, and then started to define projects or solutions. Worked with the community to prioritize those, and now we are here with the draft plan for you. And really, the purpose of this and what sets it apart from kind of a traditional transportation plan is that it is community-driven. We do some analysis to help with that, but it is really, what does the community say they need to get from point A to B using different modes? What is not working today? So it is community-driven and so all of our steps are as part of the stakeholder process. And to do that, we really, really relied on Canal Alliance and their connection to the community. So they were our partner the full way through. We set up two different kind of advisory committees. One was a resident stakeholder committee, which Canal Alliance has helped us recruit. And the other was a technical advisory committee. The transit agencies that serve the area, the East San Rafael Working Group, a representative from the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, so technical, who kind of had a pulse on what other projects are already happening. And once we had those steering committees in place for the process, we started with a pretty simple survey through WhatsApp and Facebook. Those are the channels that reach the canal community. And because so much work has already been done, the general plan did a lot of work in transportation. We didn't wanna reinvent the wheel, so we just said, what are your top transportation challenges? We started there. From there, we took the top vote-getters and we had focus groups. Those we had virtually, because this was back in February, March. And then by the time we got around to having some projects for people to weigh in on, we felt safe doing an outdoor open house. That was really fun. I'm glad we got to do it in person. And so we prioritized those projects with the help of the community. I'm just gonna share a few more things about the two major kind of input activities. The virtual focus groups, like all of our stakeholder meetings, were held entirely in Spanish. All engagement and really the whole process for the CBTP was Spanish first, English available. And we are even producing the full CBTP plan in Spanish as well. And so the focus groups, we had 10 participants. We really dove deep into these topics. Councilmember Lorenz Galati was there. That was very helpful. And the three topics you see on the screen are, again, what were highlighted through that survey. So this is what we spent the most time on. The open house, yeah, it was in April. It was a true community effort hosted by Voces del Canal, Canal Alliance, the city. And then our stakeholder committee actually hosted each of the booths. So they had come up with the ideas in the plan, they shared them, and kind of were the question-answers. And as the consultant, it was fun to kind of take a backseat for a change. We also, in addition to having the question, the booths around the transportation topics, we also had Marin Transit and Smart come and sign people up for their different discount programs and kind of do outreach. And then Canal Alliance had a booth and there was a COVID information station. The three topics that kind of came out as most important by this stage in the process were bicycle and pedestrian improvements, both within the canal, but also just getting in and out of the canal. And then lighting, which you've heard a lot about, and transit, both the service and the stop infrastructure cleanliness themselves. So through all of that process, we wound up with 11 transportation solutions. I won't go through them here today, but I'm happy to answer kind of specific questions. They range from being very specific, like the first one is a bridge connection, bike and pedestrian only, from Canal and Harbor area to Third Street. That's something that's been in the general plan. And then some of them, like the second one, are more general, just traffic calming and pedestrian improvements. They range, the project types are safety, transit, multimodal. And then you will see that the lead agency, the City of San Rafael, is the lead agency on most of these, but cannot implement most of them themselves. So there's a lot of agency collaboration that would be required. In terms of kind of how these ranked for the community, we measured community support based on the number of times we heard about a topic in our stakeholder meetings, in the focus groups, or as kind of more formal votes or tallies at the open house. So you'll see, again, not surprising, that lighting was by far and away the most requested topic. But a lot of other topics resonated with a kind of large swath of the community. There's two at the bottom that didn't get any official votes. They were solutions we kind of came up with towards the end of the process with our technical working group, but we felt they really responded to some of the issues we heard throughout the whole process. So we kept them in there. And at the end of the CBTP report, you'll see that, you know, we have to balance the community priority with the complexity and kind of implementation timeframe of some of these projects. But in our recommendations, anything that was a high priority, we say to put, you know, at the forefront and try to accomplish first, even if we know it's going to take many years to get to the final end result. And so our prioritization or scheduling of these projects is true to the nature of a CBTP. It is community-driven. And so just a few points on implementing this plan. Just like any plan, you know, what do you actually do with it? Well, there are three kind of takeaways. The first is agency and community coordination. So we really learned a lot in this process by having so much just regular meetings between the transit agencies, TAM, the San Rafael Working, East San Rafael Working Group. We even met with San Rafael City School District and the Downtown Streets Team, because these were kind of issues that came up. And there were many aha moments, I would say. And so both, it was a great learning experience with some low-hanging fruit that maybe we can take away. But also, to implement the plan, we will need to continue to have those regular check-ins between the agencies. The second is funding. And that is really the, the purpose of the CBTP is it sets you up to aggressively pursue funding. When you can say, we have a community that wholeheartedly supports this plan, we have a project described within this plan, you are much more competitive going after grants, of which there are many. And I heard there was a request for descriptions of the funding sources. So I can bring that up to you afterwards. So, yeah, aggressively kind of pursuing these grants at the federal, state, and local level, of which there are many opportunities. And then the last one is staff augmentation. You saw in this chart, the lead agency, City of San Rafael, is listed many times. And to really bring the canal transportation experience, mobility, on equal footing with the rest of San Rafael is going to take a lot of work. But the city or the community had amazing ideas for how to do that. And so it would, you know, be a mistake to let, there's funding needs, but there's also just staff capacity that could stand in the way of implementing this. So those are kind of the three main takeaways we had related to implementation. And I just wanted to close by saying thank you because this was, so many people helped pull this together. It was really a delight to work with the Canal Alliance and Voces del Canal and our stakeholder resident and agency stakeholders and city staff. So thank you and thank you, Councilmember Galati, for being part of the process as well. So happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Taylor. Thank you for that presentation. I'm sure there'll be questions. Let's start, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Great report. And I agree with you that having this now documented, I think we've all known that these problems have existed, but now having the full report will help in terms of us going out for funding opportunities. So that's great to have that. What is the plan going forward in terms of ongoing communication? Because as we know, these, I mean, some can go fast and some are gonna go slower. But it's not like it's, what is, you know, going back to all the partners as well as to the community, do you have a set timing or plan or how does that work now?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in on that. I don't know if there are other answers, maybe Lauren. But two things I'll say. One is, you know, kind of luckily, the timing of this project worked out really well, where we actually have already submitted two grant applications, ATP, which is the State's Active Transportation Program. So two grant applications were already submitted. So that is underway. And, you know, kind of the inertia, if we were to win those, would kind of just move those projects forward. The other thing is in the implementation chapter, one of the recommendations is to do an annual just like check-in on the action plan. And we made a five-year goal for each of the solutions so that you don't just like blindly make progress or not, as so often happens. And so that five-year goal sets a very tangible kind of benchmark. And so that five-year goal sets a very tangible kind of benchmark that you should be working towards. And that annual review would be done by city staff.
And was that timeframe already shared with the community?
The, the one year.
One year plus the five-year timeframe perspective?
It was shared with our stakeholder committee who reviewed the document.
Okay. Any more questions?
I think Taylor covered it.
Okay. So I do have one more follow-up question. Are there, is this going to be an ongoing committee or group? Or is it going to be incorporated into some of the existing city committees that we already have?
I can answer that. My name is Lauren Davini, Senior Traffic Engineer with San Rafael Public Works. Good evening, everyone. I think everyone, everyone learned a lot in this process about what active community members we have in the canal. And now that we're so aware of the Canal Alliance, Bosses Del Canal, there's some really great community members out there. And now we know who to reach out to moving forward. When we do projects, we never want to surprise anyone. So I think as we get funding for these, these projects that we want to implement, we'll absolutely have more meetings, bring back the stakeholders and people we've had really good contact with through this process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
I don't think that I have any questions. I have more comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
One very narrow question. I, I seem to recall approving a bike share program for the Smart Train. Is there any way that that can be extended into the canal? Or was that thought about? Or have you already done it?
I'm happy to answer that too. So the bike share program is being led by, in partnership with Sonoma and Marin Counties at TAM and, and our Sonoma partner, ACTA. They are trying to deploy the system. There's a lot of encroachment permits to work out. But the city did identify two locations in the canal. One would be near Pickleweed and one would be near Cardanius Market on Bellum.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
So my question is really around the, the connection from the CBTP and then to that next step of funding. I, I actually did request the appendix for the funding sources. So by count, I saw that there were six federal, six states, six regional, local, and then three kind of, I can't recall the category. It is exceptional or didn't fit into those first three. And I guess my, my question is, I assume that there, maybe it's just to affirm my assumption, which is that there's an analysis in front to do the best mapping from each of the 11 or I guess the first seven high priorities to the, to the funding opportunities. And then someone, I am assuming, again, the lead agency takes a role of doing that application. Is it, am I, I know there's devils in, in the details, but I'm just curious what that next step looks like.
Yeah. So I think the plan goes over the different, the 11 different kind of proposed projects. And it also gives us an idea of what funding sources could cover those projects based on if it's an active transportation thing, if it improves routes for school-aged pedestrians. And so that'll be helpful in guiding staff on which applications to apply for. And then staff really leverages consultant helps on applying for applications. So we had consultant help in applying for the Active Transportation Program, ATP funding just recently. And that, that's super helpful because grant applications can be very burdensome. And then we've also, we've had a pretty good track record of success. So we've gotten the Highway Safety Improvement Program for Third Street Intersections east of 101. We got funding for the Grand Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. We got ATP funding for the Francisco East Sidewalk Widening Project. And then as we both mentioned, we applied for two more ATP projects. And TAM local measures or local applications, we've been pretty successful in too. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll be successful, especially with an updated community-based transportation plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions. Maybe it's because I sit on both TAM and Marin Transit. So it's interesting to see the intersection of this. So in no particular order, the report, by the way, was fantastic and just, so thank you really, really thorough. And, and relevant actually to the eviction moratorium. There's a lot of information about housing in the beginning. So there are three census tracts that were highlighted. One of them pulls in, one, one goes beyond that core of the downtown canal area. We have run into issues in applying for grants before because it pulls in more affluent surrounding areas of Spinnaker and Baypoint. Is, is that going to be an issue here?
I, I wouldn't imagine so. I mean, the, the folk, real, the, the real focus of this plan was in the two kind of central.
Core ones.
Yeah, tracks, census tracks. And the population that the improvements would serve is, you know, primarily those two core census tracks as well. There's only, geographically only two projects that are kind of further out. And so I think the core of the projects, it would be very easy to argue in a grant funding application.
Well, some pay attention. We ran into it in the, in our parking rate application several times. So in there, we talked about the bike share. I was curi-, it was curious though, because report did not talk about car share at all. I was wondering if you could speak to that, why that wasn't mentioned?
Yeah. Then, then, so that was in the 2006 CBTP as a recommendation. And there are two reasons we didn't mention it. One is when, well, three actually. One is that car ownership actually has increased. Household car ownership has increased in the canal since 2006. So it may be a slightly, slightly less of a need. Time will tell as the gas prices continue, whether that is still kind of the trend. But the second reason is the community didn't request car share, even though we brought it up as something that had been in the previous CBTP. And then the third reason is that even though that was a recommendation in the last plan, it is up to private car share companies to determine whether they want to provide a car in a certain neighborhood or market. And that was very, very difficult, the city found out, to make happen since the last CBTP. So less requests, less, you know, demand for it this time and just a harder recommendation to implement.
Okay. I, I, I just, we have an issue with parking in the canal and I would hate for us to walk away from something. And I, and I hear from the community, because obviously that is the voices that, that is helping to inform the plan. And again, I don't know how it was presented. Owning a car can be, and this is even before the gas prices, is $10,000 a year. So I don't know if it was said that way. I mean, there might be ways, there's a lot more apps and technology out there. You used WhatsApp, you used other technology pieces to connect to people. So I, I just want to put that out there. I wouldn't walk away so easily. I know other, there are other cities in the United States with similar demographics that have actually had a success with the car share program. So, okay, thank you for that. I was curious and, and again, with both the Marin Transit hat on, was there ever discussed some sort of bigger bus hub in the canal neighborhood? Right now, so much goes through the transit center. And there's a whole conversation obviously around the transit center itself, but was there a discussion about having a bigger hub? And I know you talked about in the report, enhancing some of the key stops. But you know what I mean? Like making it bigger, like, like a node. Was that talked about at all?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So Marin Transit was looking and we had some really great discussions with Marin Transit. There are two stops on Kerner Boulevard that are not very far from each other. So we talked about, hey, let's maybe consolidate that, those two stops into one stop and make it one really good stop. So that's definitely up for consideration. And then the, I think the two stops, no, the stop on Medway. Unfortunately, we run into right-of-way issues. Like there's, there's just not much space past the sidewalk to, to make the transit shelters any larger. So we're doing the best we can within the right-of-way we have.
I know, I appreciate that. And that was well described in the report. It seems to me if we were to have a bigger node, so even beyond an enhanced stop, it actually sends a great message to the community. So might not have to go through the main transit center. Again, looking at transit as a complete network and what are we trying to design for? So I love the node idea, so I bring it up all the time. But, and I do understand the restrictions and the constraints having to do with that. Okay. So thank you. I noticed on this, and Taylor, you had, had listed the different, I think there were nine different priorities, maybe 10 or 11. And I was curious about combining of the Downtown Streets Team and Ambassador Program. Because are we trying to combine two existing entities? Are we trying to solve a problem? Because depending if we're trying to just solve, if we're trying to solve trash and people having information, it was interesting to me that a solution was presented where that may or may not be the right solution. Does that, does that make sense? Like I know the objectiveness we're trying to do. So I was a little bit surprised at like, okay, this is a solution where it seems to me that we would want to get more information. It was just, before we named that, does that make sense? It was very kind of a detailed thing. It kind of stuck out to me.
Yeah, I think it wouldn't have been so detailed if it hadn't come directly from, as an idea from both Marin Transit and Downtown Streets Team. So it first came up, yeah, just honestly more from Marin Transit in our conversations. They've been wanting to start an ambassador, a transit ambassadors program for a long time in the canal. They've described just kind of their staffing challenges and getting in front of the canal, canal community. And so they've been wanting to get that off the ground. And then the idea to kind of expand the Downtown Streets Team further into the canal. And we, Nora and I had a conversation with Downtown Streets Team where they did confirm that the bus stops are one of their biggest challenge areas. And so making use of a, you know, an organization that already has people physically in the community. And if they are going to kind of make the rounds of the bus stops where the most important audience is for the transit ambassador information, that was one kind of unique opportunity to combine two programs.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense. You know, these plans, the last time we did it was in 2006. And I have a real hesitancy in naming agencies that exist today. So I, I, I mean, I have no problem with the concept of maybe having a program that has ambassadors and people can help clean. But I, I, I think we could be putting our constraints on us by naming a specific organization. So I don't know if that's something that can be removed from the plan. I, I just, you know, we're talking about a 10 or 15-year plan here. And, and the Downtown Streets Team is a, a contract that's throughout the city. And I just want to make ultimate flexibility so we can respond to the community. And then the last question, and you actually had this on there, was around staffing. And so these plans come down because they're funded by MTC. TAM is the congestion management agency. So that's why it comes here. So again, and I'm very protective of our city resources and our staff, which is limited. And then having that brought to us and saying, okay, now it's on you, city, to do this. So my question is, how does TAM and MTC who is driving this? And again, I agree with this process, but how do they show up in terms of the staffing? Is it really through the grants to hire someone? Like it, again, it was a little bit of a disconnect to me that, that the suggestion was, oh, San Rafael, you need to hire more people. It's like, well, there are, actually, we're not, we're not transit experts. We have other, TAM's transit experts, Marin Transit is. So could you speak to that or what other communities do? Because we're not the only community that has a community-based transportation plan. So do all, in all nine counties of all the, basically 30 reports, I think it was, or 30 of these, do all 30 cities then staff an additional person to implement? Or are there other best practices?
I'll start and I might have Taylor jump in. But from City of San Rafael experience, I think the staff we have has done a really good job identifying which grants that were eligible for and which projects were eligible for. And then leveraging consultants to help with those applications. And I believe you're reviewing the budget tonight. When we build our CIP, we set aside, CIP Capital Improvement Program. We set aside funding for consultants to help us supply for, for grants. So we know, you know, it's worth it to spend some money to get more, to try to get more money. And so that, that is our plan is using consultants in the future.
Yeah. And, and, and I understand that in this, it had a very specific about possibly hiring on more staff. And you guys do an incredible job of chasing down those grants. They're not a one-page thing that you fill out. So I don't want anyone to think that. There are many, many pages. So do you have any sense of other cities and towns, how they handle the staffing component?
I can give an example where, you know, the, these, the CBTP program or projects are funded at the regional level, but they are often a request at the local level just to have, to take a closer look, you know, at a certain area in the city. And so I know just another program that we worked on or that we observed very closely in San Francisco. When they did a CBTP recently, they decided to commit more staff time to this neighborhood. That's not necessarily an option in a smaller jurisdiction. But I think part, partly this is just to say, kind of set expectations that if you really were to try to accomplish all of the solutions in the short and medium term, you could employ another staff person, you know, it's.
We could always use more staff. A hundred percent agree with that comment.
Yeah. So if that is an opportunity to make the case, you know, elsewhere, then that is partly, again, why we put it in the report.
Yeah. No, that's really, that's helpful. And as I said, it's, it's a great report. And I just, I, I wanted to understand, it's, it's always challenging when you're bringing in different systems, right? And trying to have them intersect. And so that's why I was very granular in my questions. Okay. So with that, I'll see if there's any public comment. And there might be more questions that come up. So Dr. Garen, did you want to do some, did you want to?
Lauren, sit down.
Okay, okay. Okay. Anyone in the chamber would like to address the council on this issue? Not seen any. Does anyone like to comment over Zoom?
I see no hands raised at the moment. Give everyone a moment. And also just announce that if you're calling in, you'll need to press star nine and wait for me to invite you to, to speak. And then you'll need to press star six to unmute. And if you're on Zoom, you'll, you can use the raise hand feature to raise your hand. And then again, wait for me to unmute you. I do see one hand.
John Reynolds, again, I live in the canal. Yeah, it's really, I'm glad to see this going forward. And the Bosses Day Canal and the Canal Alliance moving in it, the Public Works working on it and the transit system working on it, all coming together. How do we get everybody together to do what's needed and the funding too? I'm glad that you have people moving, chasing down those grants. We need to do that. I mean, I don't know whether Marin Community Foundation would be one of those places. Or maybe even, this is probably out of the box, Aliende and George Lucas, but I don't, maybe not. But you're pretty much on top of the grants and where the funding can come from, but that's important. And the coordination with the transit authorities as well as Public Works to do this. And getting the light would be the first priority. I, I don't know. It depends on the Bosses Day Canal, what their first priority it actually is in this regard. You lay out the timeline, I know. So maybe that's the timeline we go with. I think that's what the Bosses Day Canal and Canal Alliance were part of deciding, the Public Works together deciding that. So I, I appreciate this and I really want things to go strong for the canal. They really need support, not only, you know, in, in, in providing money for rent and that kind of thing, but also the plan that they put out several weeks ago to do this new thing in the canal. I'm really supportive of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone just a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close with a public comment. And actually, John brought up a good point because we have talked about lighting. We talked about lighting at the last meeting. So I don't know if someone from DPW just wants to just briefly touch on that because we have had that conversation, but if someone didn't tune in last meeting, they wouldn't know all the work that's being done about that. Hello, Director Garen.
Mayor, thank you. Bill Garen with Public Works Council. We, we, just today, as April said earlier, installed 35 different lights, much brighter than there were before in existing locations in the canal on the pathways that were identified by the community as very important pathways for their getting back and forth to their cars and to, to the park in different places. So that, that's actually happening now. It is a pilot. If, if the community doesn't like the lights, we can take them out and change them out for a different kind. But they were immediately available through DC Electric and for a very small fee. Of course, DC Electric is, is very generous with their time as well. They installed all these lights on the pathways. And so that's very exciting. We really do want to encourage the community to go out and take a look and see. We really do want to encourage the community to go out and take a look and see. Hopefully if they notice a difference, that would be very important. But if it's much brighter than it was before, Jim and I took a tour with, with DC Electric in the middle of the night. And the police officer, whose name I forgot now, but kind of a fun evening, 10 o'clock going around, looking at different lights. And, and the ones that we identified and the ones that they had put up as a pilot were much brighter than the lights that were there existing beforehand. So I think this is going to be a big improvement. We did meet with PG&E recently. Their process is bureaucratic, to say the least. But they, the regional vice president met with us and did offer to try to accelerate their program. They have to go through the CPUC to get approval for even installing a light on it, on a power pole. It's, you know, it requires calculations and design and engineering and a whole bunch of things that have to happen. What he did commit to was getting his part of it done 60 days before the, the time change in November. With the idea that that would give San Rafael the opportunity to purchase the materials and be in a position to install the lights in that 60 day window before the time changes in, in November too. I think it's daylight savings time, we're not positive. And that's exciting. Their timeframe when they first reiterated or related it to us was eight months of design time. And so this is a pretty big acceleration on their part. He promised an update on the 24th. We're, you know, anxiously awaiting that, that update from PG&E. But I know it's in their engineering department now. And they're, they're doing their engineering, they've started their engineering and estimating associated with this plan. So it's, it's, it's going to happen and it's, it's hopefully going to happen in a more compressed timeframe than originally stated by them.
Thank you. That's really helpful because lighting did come up and we have talked a lot about it and it didn't come up as much tonight. So I just wanted to clarify for the community that you are so on it. Our team is so on it. So thank you. And PG&E, thank you for giving them that extra encouragement to go a little faster.
Mayor Kate, can I just add really quickly as well that the action tonight is to adopt the plan? We, we did, I think we were giving you about a, in my estimation, like 98% completed plan. There are some appendix, appendices and things like that that we need to attach. So I think there still is an opportunity, unless I get any head shaking to the contrary, that we could make these kind of final edits to the plan as we finalize it, take these comments that we're hearing from you today. And for example, things like removing specific names of service providers or kind of being a little bit more clear on what we mean, mean by staff capacity. And talk about that being a partnership and so forth. So I think it'd be easy to make those kinds of changes to the plan and then, and then call it finalized at that point with the council comments, if you'd like us to do it that way.
That would be great. Thank you. And city clerk, do we need to toggle our incredible interpreters?
We do. Thank you so much. Gilberto, you'll be going over to the Spanish channel now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll let you know when we're ready, Mayor Kate.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you. Okay. I'll bring it back for comments and based on what the city manager said, 98% cooked. And so if there are any additional comments, those can be put into the plan as a final vice mayor comments. No, I, I think it's really, I mean, it's great to have the plan and see, I hope that we're going to continue to Mayor Kate's point. To see if some of the participating, other participating agencies will take more of a lead role. I mean, I think San Rafael is the lead because it's in San Rafael. And of course, we're going to be the lead on a number of these. But I would love to see some of our participating agencies become the lead. Or say, yes, we're willing to take that on as well because it's also been on our list. And we know some of these have been on their list. I would like to see if there is that little 2% opening in the report to add a little bit more follow up on communication and what the commitment back to the community is going to be. And just like the example with the lights tonight, how, how is the broader community going to hear about that? Or know, or if they do have questions, know who to contact. And just that full circle to close that loop of the whole process. And I think that, is there, I think, if there's a way in the, when we get the updates on the CIP to reference this report, to somehow indicate, so we tie the two together so that we know that we're, we're actually working through this report as well. I think those are some of the things that I would love to see going forward, but I, thank you. I think this is a great move forward for the work that needs to happen. Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, well, I also want to start by thanking all of you because I, I, I think the, the way that it was planned with Public Works, with Tyler, your agency, all the stakeholders that were included. But especially, I have to say, Canal Alliance and Voces del Canal. The fact that the leaders were actually on that open house, talking about each project is usually us talking about different projects and this was coming from them. And it was so well attended and so well organized. And I think it's such a great plan. I love the annual review. I love the goal of like five years. I see, you know, some, some of the, like, you know, one of the comments about the car share. I learned recently that many of our community members, I mean, many of our members in, in the canal, they invest in their cars. It's an investment. So I can see how they don't want to do the car share, you know? Or maybe it's not like a top, you know, important to them because it's also like a tool for work as well. But there were so many great discoveries. I'm especially excited for the big dream of building the bridge between the canal and Montecito. Because I think it's going to be a game changer for the community, having everybody been able to bike, you know? Like thinking about San Rafael High School, but just connecting the canal with the rest of the city. There is like one way in and one way out right now. So I think that would really be opening the door. So when I'm thinking about adding another staff member, and of course we have to look at our budgets. But when I'm thinking about thinking big and really writing grants, we do need that extra support, even if he's working with other agencies. So I'm, I'm very thankful for the report and I'd be very happy to support it. I think it's a great step and great timing as well with everything else that we are working is, is the perfect timing right now with all the different pieces of the puzzle. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have two comments, some at a very high strategic level and one at a more focused tactical level. First on the strategic level, I think this is so exciting. We have got a, a part of our community that has increasing transit demand. Everywhere we look, transit demand is falling off. As a now former transit user for a, a long time, the changes brought by the pandemic have changed the, the nature of the transportation world. And this group of, of customers is growing. And now we have a plan for how to bring them in, bring better services to them. So I think that's extremely exciting and particularly because when we go to aggressively pursue those funding opportunities, we've got transit demand that very few other areas are going to be able to, to produce. So that's super exciting on very, just from that perspective, I think it's a great report. Then transitioning to the smaller issue, I just want to shine the light on the lighting issue. As an example, of our teams under the leadership of our director, who will soon be leaving us, but who leaves behind the legacy of this type of action. An, an issue came up that, and people recognized that it could be solved right away. We didn't need to write a report. We didn't need to do a bunch of stuff. Our highest ranking city officials went out in the, in the dark, in the dark of night to inspect the, the situation and came up with a solution and found someone to do it at a very inexpensive cost. And it's done. That's, that, that's really awesome. That's, that's what planning, planning processes need to do to respond to the, the, the needs of the community. So I'll be very happy to vote for approving and adopting the plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. And thank you colleagues for your comments. I would underscore what the vice mayor had indicated around making sure we have a, a strong communications plan. I will leave it to, to Ferran Perez and staff to consider what that looks like for the community that we're serving. I would also like to see, as we're pursuing funding, it occurs to me that, you know, the Biden administration has highlighted their justice 40, making sure that underserved and upper, underrepresented community members are emphasized for these types of improvements, especially when it comes to transportation for a better climate future. I would like to see if we can find ways to get enhanced funding, especially through the federal sources, if we can do that. And then I will, in a sideways way, give Bill Garen a few comments. I came into council about a year and a half ago. And Bill, in that time, invested a lot of time, not just in me, but I, in firsthand, saw how he would go out into the community, engage community members in person and talk through issues. I learned a lot from Bill in that process and hold him as a gold standard for how city engage with community members. So I'll, beyond just the results that you've produced, Bill, you've set a very high bar. So thank you for your service to our community. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Andy's put a great team in place too. So, so thank you for that. I concur with the comments that my colleagues gave. And, and I do have to say, having been on Marin Transit for many years, I've been the president of Marin Transit two years ago, when I read the whole part of lack of awareness around transit options and free fares, Marin Transit has worked really, really hard to provide discounted fares, free fares. So I'm not glad, that's not the right word. I, I appreciate that it was daylighting, that the, that the message wasn't getting there. Because that has been very, very deliberate by Marin Transit. Marin Transit knows who's riding the buses and really wants to support the community. So the fact that there, that was disconnected, and I wrote on that one, I'm like, we can fix this one. This one doesn't need a plan. This just needs, you know, having a deeper conversation with Marin Transit, working with our community partners to get those messages out. Because as your report said, transit does eat into folks' income. And there are programs in place to alleviate that and they've been there. So, so I will commit to continue to have those conversations at the Marin Transit level. Because we got to do better, got to do better on that. So I, again, thank you, Taylor, for this great report and for adding the little additional comments that you heard tonight from the dais. And we all said, okay, with that, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Micah, would you like to make it?
Okay, I'm super excited tonight. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2022 Canal Community Based Transportation Plan.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, team, and thank you to Paloma and Gilberto, who were providing the interpretation this evening. We really appreciate them. And the interpretation will end after this item. So thank you. That, we're doing a little bit of musical chairs. Our next item, we'll speak slowly. Okay. Has the outdoor on-street dining guidelines for streeteries. We had Director Garen, now Director O'Leary's here. You guys have your swan song. It was planned. Yeah, tag team. I will turn it over to you. Make sure that your microphone is on.
Can you hear me?
I can't. For some reason, it's, maybe it's just me. I feel like I'm having a hard time hearing people this evening.
I'll try, I'll try to talk loud.
That's, that's good. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Danielle O'Leary, Director of Economic Development. And tonight we're here with an informational report on our new streeteries program. And really the goal of this program is to bridge, shift and transition our emergency parklet COVID-19 program that is going to be expiring on November 30th, 2022. Tonight, Director Garen is going to go through a quick PowerPoint that highlights all the various aspects of the program. And we also have senior management analyst Victoria Lim in the audience. And she is also available to help answer any questions. Before I turn it over to Bill, I wanted to thank Victoria for her excellent project management. This was a collaborative effort of nine different city teams and departments. Everyone on the team provided a great amount of expertise, passion and creativity towards bringing this program to you tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill and then just stay by to answer any questions. Bill?
Thank you, Danielle. And I just want to echo Danielle's comments also to the mayor and council that Victoria was the driver of this presentation and did a great job of corralling all. As I complained about many of my lunches being spent with the streeteries team, but I think it's a product that's very worthwhile. It was a seven month effort by nine of the departments to work through this process. The feedback from the community members included the Chamber of Commerce, the Business Improvement District and several of the local restaurants that actually took the time to read through the streeteries document and provide us feedback on it. They had very helpful comments about implementation and how they could do it. And I think that, that added to the, to the document itself. We had three iterations with the Economic Development Subcommittee. For those of you who are participants of that, you remember. And the proposed guidelines are expected to enhance the economic vitality of the city while ensuring safety and fairness. So we, we really think that this is going to be, push the wrong button, a boon to the city. But we want to make the streeteries more permanent and safe in the process. And I think this, this, this effort will do that. This is just a vision of what we kind of hope to achieve in, in San Rafael. Several of our streeteries are, are pretty much there. Several of them, you know, continue to need a little work to, to get to this vision. But we really have a vision of, of structures that are, that are very inviting to the public. The guidelines for the design and the structure of the, of the new streeteries. We talked about having a maximum of two parking spaces per streetery. So part of the guidance, that, that's the guidance that we had for the, the temporary program also. They, they could have as much as two parking spaces and many of them did take that on. If you think about the amount of space, you need to sort of, you know, make sure the parking space next to it is available. And, you know, you come in a little bit off the, off the street edge. One parking space really doesn't, you know, give a lot of space for, for dining. So two spaces really does help create a, an environment and a, a place that people can go to and eat outside. So we think that two spaces would be a good idea for the program. We also recognize that parking is a premium in San Rafael and especially on Fourth Street. So we have, and this is again, a holdover from the temporary program. We would expect to see at least 70 parking spaces on the same block be available or be within a block and a half of one of the parking garages in San Rafael. And that's something that we used in the temporary program and are carrying forward into the permanent program. Safety and aesthetics and cleanliness are the priorities that we focused on when we developed this program. We think wood and metal materials lend themselves to these streeteries. So we're suggesting that wooden metal materials be used to create the, the, the visible space. We recognize that there are some current streeteries that have overhead structures. Many of them, I think most of them were not permitted. So the engineering required for that didn't really happen. They sort of threw them up and, you know, we've, we've, we've looked at, looked at them to make sure that they, they are safe. But we would expect that a building permit be required if a, a structure is going to be taller than six feet. So anything that can fall over and, you know, kind of hit you in the head, we want to make sure that there's a, a design and a, a building permit review for that. ADA compliance is mandatory. I think goes without saying. We want to make sure that these are accessible to all users. Traffic safety and wheel stops, white delineators and visible sightlines are all going to be incorporated so that their cars driving down the street will, will see the streetery, be aware of it and, and hopefully get around it. The wheel stops are more about parking next to it. We want to make sure that someone trying to get in and out of a parking space doesn't, you know, smack into the side of the streetery also. So we're, we're putting those in. Just a, a comment, San Rafael will be providing, you know, some of these, we'll be installing some of these things to make sure that they're installed properly. But that's going to be provided by the users. And we have modular streeteries as an option also. We found some things online that we think are handsome, easy to install, easy to remove if we ever had to get into the street to do something. So that's just an example of what we consider to be an aesthetically pleasing modular structure made of metal and wood. The guidelines for maintenance and operations. We obviously want the streeteries to be clean and good condition and secure when not in use. We want to make sure that, that the tables and chairs are secure, that nothing can be, you know, tossed into the street by a passerby, something like that. And obviously clean. They, we expect them to be available during business hours. So if your restaurant is open, we would expect the streetery to be available for use also. Obviously, we want them to be fire, fire code compliant. There's a lot of concerns about, you know, gas burners or, you know, electrical connections that could cause fires. So we want to make sure that all those are accommodated. And then hours of operation, because it is an outdoor activity causing noise in the street, we would limit it to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday and holidays. And then 9:00 PM, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. and then 9:00 PM, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sundays through Thursdays. So, accommodate people that are, that are, you know, living in, well, living on Fourth Street. The financial and legal concerns that we have, we have an application fee for $2,000, that's the review time for staff to go through the application and make sure it's, it's up to snuff. We want to waive the, the application fee for the first year, so all the existing streeteries that are trying to become compliant, we, we're not going to charge those. But as streeteries happen down the road, we would expect to have, as we have with all of our, you know, permitting for both building and, and encroachments, a fee associated with that to pay for staff time. We're not requiring that the landlord approve the structure, that was something that we talked about, but we think that this is related to the restaurant and it's in city property, so it does not require, should not require a landlord approval. However, we're concerned and want to be aware of a landlord who loses a restaurant tenant. If that happens, we don't want to have the, you know, tenant rip the thing out if, if the landlord thinks there's an opportunity to bring in another restaurant and, and use it. So, we're allowing them to, to keep it for up to six months, but they would be paying the fees associated with it. And again, for, for structures over six feet or electrical connections and wired lighting, we would want to have a building permit for that. There's an annual fee of $3,600 per parking space, so I think for most people, it's going to be a, a charge of $7,200. That is basically the cost, the money that's been generated in the parking space otherwise, so we think that's a fair charge for the restaurants. We've seen charges much higher in other communities, lower in some, but this, this seems to hit the, the mark in the middle, and it, and it covers the cost that the, the Parking Services Fund would be losing by allowing these parking, these streeteries in parking spaces. And then again, we're proposing a 50% discount in the first year and a 25% discount in the second year, with the idea that, you know, people will have to spend some money to make, make themselves compliant. We, we recognize that, and we want to make it easy for them to, to hit the ground running by, by discounting some of the costs associated with the program. We're charging a security deposit of $2,000. That is basically to, it, it would be expected that a, a streetery owner would remove the streetery if, in fact, they, they, you know, decide they don't need it, if they go bankrupt, may not, you know, be in a position to, to remove the streetery. So, we want to have $2,000 in the, in the kitty, so to speak, to remove the streetery if need be. We're also concerned about maintenance and other, you know, cleanliness and that kind of thing. If, if someone's not maintaining their streetery, we would have the right to spend those, those $2,000 to maintain the streetery itself. And then, again, it was calculated on the base, based on the cost of removing the structure using city staff. And then just, you know, here's a couple of, you know, examples, we, you know, didn't include the names to protect the innocent, but, you know, several people have, you know, pretty, pretty minimalist streeteries. Some are not, you know, they set it up, it's, you know, a decent streeter, but they're not using it, because they have otherwise some outdoor space. So, these are the kind of things that we want to recognize are, are not what we're looking for in the future, just to give a couple of bad examples. And then the transition process, all, all the streeteries will be expected to be permitted, so we're going to ask everybody to apply. They're all in compliance until the end of November, so we would, we would ask them to, to plan for the transition before the, the temporary program expires. Again, structures over six feet will have a building permit requirement. And, and, and we expect that, that, you know, the people that, that have invested in streeteries will do the, the couple of upgrades that are required to make them compliant for, for the future, and others will have to make a more significant investment or remove the streetery that they have now and, and return those parking spaces to parking. And we would be very happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. You've done so much work on this, and it's exciting to have this here. I know the chamber and our business partners have been asking for this day and this, this program to be brought forward, so thank you. So, questions? Vice Mayor?
No, I really appreciate the report, it's great. And I'm, I'm so happy San Rafael's moving forward with this program. I know some other communities have decided not to, and I, I'm glad that we're doing this. The question I have is if multiple, I know we talked about 70% in terms of looking at parking, if multiple, and I guess it doesn't have to be a restaurant, but any business could set up a streetery. You could potentially want to do your art projects outside or your bookstore outside, I guess, maybe. But is there any limitation of how many can be next to each other? So, if, if three storefronts are interested in setting up their streetery, how is that going to be prioritized?
There are places where there's probably four parking spaces in a row taken, I can't think of if there's more than that. But then they're on both sides of the street, but they do comply with, with the 70% rule or the, you know, be, being near a parking space. There's a couple of areas where the restaurants are sort of, you know, together, and I know at least one owner's been, you know, waiting for this presentation to happen, because he wants to convert, I think, three restaurants in a row and take the entire street, which is not going to happen, but we'll, we'll work with him on that. The, the, you know, the idea of, of other businesses coming out, we offered that during the, the COVID, and, and no one took us up on it. But it is not limited to restaurants, we're just assuming that restaurants are probably going to be the main users. I think the, the main concern that other people have is they're sole proprietors or something, and if they're, you know, out on the street and someone's in the store, they don't know, you know, where they should be, it's, it's that kind of a situation for a lot of businesses in San Rafael where they have, you know, limited staffing and, and concerns about having merchandise on the street and having to keep their eye on it. So, I think, I think that's the, the concern that we mainly heard expressed about why other people haven't taken advantage of these. But, you know, we, we, the restaurants that took on the program in the, in the temporary, you know, they're all out there, and there's still parking available. You know, again, there's, there is a restaurant owner that is interested, that's expressed interest recently, actually a couple of them, you know, less recently, and, and one that's been after us just in the last month or so. But we will continue to maintain parking in the city as well.
Thank you.
And I, I'll just, I'll just add that, we did open this, during the pandemic and the early stages, this program was available to retailers and personal service. Many of them found it hard to transition into outside staffing constraints, trying to protect merchandise, you know, eyes on merchandise for hairdressers, kind of where does the hair go, and all these, you know, just fundamental things we were trying to figure out at the time. And so, really, what it, what it boiled down to was just the restaurant use. And when we think about restaurants, you know, traditionally, our masks are off, we're eating, and so that really is important to have that outside option for people. And so, it's not to say retailers won't, but they just so far haven't been able to, to step into the program in a meaningful way like the restaurants have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Great proposal. I'm, I'm wondering, though, about the current existing sites, some of which, as you showed us with some photographs, are undesirable. And I'm wondering if we want to wait until basically the end of the year to start abatement programs? Is there anything that we can do with, I mean, it's one thing if they're actively working towards getting into compliance, but some of them out there, you know, look undesirable. Is there some, is there any way that we can get moving faster on those?
So, are you, are you asking if, if we can extend that timeline for some of those? Or you want, you want to speed up that?
No, I want to speed, for the ones that are so far out of compliance, that, and have evidence, no interest in getting themselves into compliance, and they're just sort of, I use the word trashy, but they're not very nice looking, and they're just sort of sitting out there.
They are, and, and, and we, we offered the temporary facilities till the end of November. So, that's, that's what's out there today. The, I, I, I think that, that the council certainly can decide if they don't want to see some of the, the eateries continue, but what we did offer is for people that are, that are, you know, suffering through the COVID, the emergency, that they could have outdoor dining until the end of the year. And we were intending to, to honor that, that commitment that we made to the streeteries. I think once the guidance is out and people see what kind of they're up against, for lack of a better term, and, and how they compare, I think they'll realize that they either have to step it up, you know, by the end of the year, or it's going to go away. We provided some of the materials to them, we provided the barricades, we provided some planters, we provided the, the big orange water-filled things that are out there that we'll be collecting at the end of the time. But, but our, our commitment to the, to the restaurateurs was to continue it till the end of November this year.
Councilmember Bushy, there are a few examples of some restaurants that just aren't using them, right? And so, those would be tactically, we would work with staff to outreach to them and let them know of these changes and confirm that they are not using them, and then ask them to remove. So, there will be that type of staff work going on to the lead-up of the transition. There are some, however, that maybe aren't compliant but are really active and really well-used, and so we want to work with those to try to transition them. So, hopefully, that gives you a little bit more insight into how we're going to try to shift.
So, so you'll be out there informally trying to, really move them into compliance or move them off the street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah?
Yeah, thank you so much, this is a super, super exciting. You know, I grew up in Spain, and I just love to be able to sit outside, so this, in a way, COVID is, to me, the silver lining. I guess I have a question around, do we have businesses right now that they use more than two car spaces for, so, all the businesses that we have right now in San Rafael?
Individual restaurants could get up to two spaces, there was an overlap requirement with the, with the next-door neighbor, so if the parking space overlapped the other store by more than 50%, they couldn't use that space, so a very small restaurant would have a hard time getting to. But a lot of the, the current temporary streeteries have two parking spaces, but no one has more than that.
No. We, we do have just one, which is Libations, and they're located on B Street, and part of it was from, we had a, we had a former parklet program that they went through, and then they additionally added some seats for the COVID-19 piece. The reason that we approved that at the time was there was the six-feet social distancing, and the old parklet didn't allow for that. So, that owner is aware and will be removing that, those extra two before November 30th, but that's the only exception that we have.
Okay. And how many businesses do you think will be affected with this change?
We have a total of 31.
Today.
Today.
And we don't know how many will participate in the new program, but, but, and again, there are, there is another restaurant or an owner of three restaurants that wants to join the program, so there may be more, but today, there's 31, and we think several will, will not continue, and several will upgrade their facilities.
Yeah, great. And then, so, yeah, I guess this is more of a comment, so maybe I can do it later.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Still doing questions? One second. I want to pick up on what Councilmember Bushy was talking about, because there are some that aren't being used, and, and I understand what you're saying about honoring our commitment through November of 2022, and it was a good faith effort during the craziness of the pandemic. So, I wouldn't want that good faith to be abused, let's say, by, by restaurants or businesses that aren't using them. They're not planning on complying, and they're just sitting out there because they're busy, they're doing their inside business, and they haven't taken the time or the effort to do the outside business, it's going to sit there, not looking that great until November when it's cleared. So, I, so I don't want to go back on our word, but I, I wonder if there's something else that we could put in there, if it's either not being utilized, or if it's just, it comprises the orange water-filled things and two, like those, they look like bike racks, like, that's, I mean, can we set a, a floor of what's acceptable? I, I mean, I really appreciate what Mary Beth is saying.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Danielle, the suggestion of staff going out with, working with the, working with each of the streetery owners or, you know, leases, lease-ors, to, to make sure they understand what the new program is, and then helping them understand that what they have is not cutting it, it needs to move more quickly is the right way to go. There are a couple that are just completely unused, and we can certainly request that they remove them simply for that reason.
So, and I appreciate all that outreach that Victoria or whoever else coming behind you will be doing. I'm just wondering if there's a tool that we can give you when you're having those conversations of, as, just a tool to actually nudge them, as opposed to just having a nice conversation about it, it's like, well, you're going to do this, or sign this letter, or you're going to agree to this, or we're going to remove it. I don't know.
Fire safety compliance.
Does, that, I, I mean, whatever it can be, but it's just, we don't have any, you don't have any tools now. Right now, the way it is, is everything is there through November 30th, and I'm wondering if there's a tool that we can give you, in those instances, you probably know off the top of your head between Victoria and Danielle, the ones that are problematic, and if there's something that we could pass tonight as part of this to give you just a little bit more influence over the outcome.
I, I think giving us a staff direction that for the parklets that are not utilized, right, that, that, those need to become non-existent before the end of November 30th. So, if, if you're a business not utilizing your street parklet, that we would have the authority to, to remove that, right? If you are a business that's actively using these parklets, then, and you don't quite meet the criteria, then city staff is committed to work with you to help meet that criteria. I feel like that nuance right there will probably get to the heart of what you're concerned about. For most of us.
I was, I was going to suggest that we, we have an implementation strategy of a commitment to the program and a move towards compliance in September, maybe, or something like that, that, that requires them to actually commit to, to the future program and then start implementing the changes that are necessary, because it is going to take time to put these in place. They won't just appear on, on December 1st, and, and the good faith effort of, of getting to compliance or not would be a good tool for us as well.
Yeah. Victoria, did you want to add something? You want you come on up?
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. I just had an idea, if you'd like to incentivize some of the businesses that have less desirable ones and that probably most likely do not want to continue using it, as Director Guerin mentioned, there is a cost to the removal. So, to incentivize them, if the city would be willing to remove the structure and offer that to them now, as, as an early removal, and we'll remove it at our cost, that might be an idea, if our intention is to try to get that rid of, get rid of those. If they wait until November, end of November, and to let them know, then that burden of removal is on them.
Good idea.
And I, I like that, so that's something, we, we put a lot of the temporary facilities in place and certainly could remove them very easily.
Yeah. Okay. If you have another question, Vice Mayor?
I do. Could two restaurants, if two restaurants would like to share an out, a streetery, is that possible? And would they, we manage as a city, would we manage that share arrangement, or would you ask one of the restaurants to manage that?
You know, ideally, we would, I, I think if you are involving any type of alcohol beverage service, that the ABC is going to have rules that they are independently operated. I, I don't see many shared concepts, so there might be some things there that would not be advantageous, but if you're a business that doesn't have that, I, I, you know, I don't see any issue with them wanting to cost-share a space. But typically, what we've found is most of the businesses want agency over their space and the design of it, and the management of it. And it has an ABC alcohol beverage control aspect to it of why they want to do that.
Interesting, okay.
And I see Neera, I, let's see, this is how we know we're hybrid, she just appeared.
Hello.
Neera, did you want to add in?
Yes, I am here despite the fact that I've been a black screen the entire meeting. I, I do want to add that the streetery program and guidelines and the licenses that will ultimately be issued will require compliance with all county health regulations. And as Danielle just mentioned, I, I do think there are going to be limitations on the abilities of restaurants to share spaces. And so, we would probably, we could consider allowing it, but it would have to be to the discretion of the, of the county.
Thank you. And one more question, two years, three years down the road, who's actually the enforcer? Is it Folter DPW? Is it Parking? Is it Parking? Is it?
We we talked about having regular inspections by the fire department for for code compliance and building for for building, you know, code compliance. Public Works would be looking for drainage issues and things like that. General upkeep is something that that we've agreed that we do, what was it, quarterly inspections or semi annual?
Chiefs, Deputy Chief Senate offered to go out and do quarterly inspections.
So so the Deputy Fire Chief is going to do quarterly inspections. He would identify issues that that others should look at in his quarterly inspections. And so we will be ensuring that they continue to be maintained properly and, you know, clean and habitable and all the things that we're looking for.
Great. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, not seen any other questions. There might be more that arise. Public comment on this item. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on it? Not seeing any. I will turn it over to the city clerk. If there's anyone who'd like to comment virtually.
Yes, there's a hand.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney. Couldn't resist this. I'm really appreciative of the city taking these actions and, you know, the efforts to create a really more livable street out there. I also wanted to express appreciation, add appreciation to Bill Garen and his team for taking this on. I was thinking, well, first of all, I appreciate having a new word in my vocabulary. Streetery was not a word before tonight in my mind, so that's, that's always a plus for a word person. I also, it crossed my mind that this is a kind of attention to appearance that results from a DPW director who also has a background in architecture. And that's really shows in in this item. The wood and metal materials is, I think, a really good direction. I would suggest also, you know, minimizing to the extent possible overhead structures at all. I mean, these are mostly used in the summer or not in the dead of winter. And of course, it rains in the dead of winter sometimes and not so much in the summer. So I thought that was a direction. Also, you know, your design review board right now is not particularly tasked with a whole lot of activity. And maybe they could get involved in helping to assure that these opportunities to enliven the street are really taken advantage of. So, you know, these are great improvements to the streetscape if they're well done. Add activity to Fourth Street and I'm much appreciated that the city is on top of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I see no other hands raised, but I'd like to remind everyone, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature if you'd like to provide public comment. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no additional public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for additional comments from the council. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just think it's great. I'm glad this is moving forward. I love it seeing actually formalized into a program and a document that we can go back to. And I'm hoping many of our businesses take advantage of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Bill and Victoria, as well as the BID Business Improvement District and Chamber of Commerce and all businesses that have participated in this journey. I know the staff report did reflect this, but in summary, to get here has been challenging. And I think what this reflects is navigating to make sure that the use of our shared space is used in a way that benefits different types of personas in our community, restaurants, non restaurants, and community members ultimately. So I deeply appreciate the amount of effort that went in to make sure that we can navigate toward that in the future. Obviously, we will adjust as we need to, as we always have through this pandemic, as we come out into hopefully something that looks not like a pandemic in the future. But appreciate the journey and the marshaling of this this report, or sorry, this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I agree with everything. And it's a great report, great, a great program. And I'm sort of stuck on the issue of the noncompliant ones and letting them sit around till the end of the year. Would it be helpful to you if we were to include in the authorization? I can, are we?
Approving a staff.
Include in the recommendations that we authorize staff where they find a streetery is not being used to order the removal of the streetery within 10 days? Would that be helpful to you?
Or removing, I may enhance it, removing by September 1, we pay for it, some sort of nuance, like?
Well, we can, we could throw in incentives, but, you know, September 1, why are we leaving these things hanging around? Some of them are not attractive. I'm gone.
Very fast going to get her truck.
And I would, I would give people 30 days just to to marshal their, their, you know, kids or whoever that are going to get to to remove these things. But I think it would be very helpful for us to have that.
Okay, so 30 days.
And then perhaps an implementation schedule would be helpful as well, that that requires some sort of indication that you're going to continue or remove the facility.
Okay. Okay. Mary Beth's going wordsmithing over there. Okay, while you're doing that, we'll pass along to Councilmember Yann Skoladi.
Yeah, thank you so much again. I, as a former restaurant owner, I think this is very exciting. Nothing brings more vitality than actually having people in the streets. So I'm also hoping that this will also maybe encourage other businesses coming to San Rafael to take to take advantage of this. I do feel for the restaurant business during COVID, so I, I'm not sure the ones that they are not using it right now, I'm sure that you already have contact with them. But it is definitely a big investment to pay for rents downtown. You know, it's hard to hire people right now to work in the restaurant business. So it's a very challenging industry. I think this definitely, I think, helps out, you know, being able to offer more space for them. And I really appreciate all the details, the waivers, you know, giving the businesses a chance. And also really thanking all the departments working together and the Downtown Improvement District, the Chamber, you know, I think it's been like really helpful to have all the different feedbacks, so it's not like a surprise to them. So I really look forward to be eating out in our beautiful spaces. A comment that I do have is safety, and I love the idea of the wood and metal, but I've seen like planters made out of cement. So not to break your vision, because I think it's really nice, but in terms of safety, I, you know, I don't know, in terms of traffic.
Yeah, we we did talk about that, Councilmember. We we believe, you know, Fourth Street is a 25 mile an hour zone. These things are in mid block. They're not typically at the corners. In fact, you know, one of the requirements we have is that it not block the 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 traffic signals or the the other signage that's out there that that directs people. So the 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 cars are moving mid block, you know, relatively slowly, although, you know, not everybody goes the speed limit. And we think it will be safe with the reflectors and the 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 wheel stops and the things that we're installing. We did have, you know, the orange barricades because it was just, you know, otherwise a metal barricade. And and so we 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 did think those were important. And and in some locations, we might require that as part of our review, that if it's, you know, close to to something specific, we might require more. But generally speaking, we think that these will be safe.
Great. So you have think of everything, which is great. You have thought of everything. Yeah, I have one more thought, but I missed it. Oh, my last one will be, will be just like with the council review, I hope it doesn't take a long time when somebody wants to come in and put it in, that it doesn't take a long time to review the process.
Again, there's not a real, there is an encroachment permit basically that that goes along with this, be looking at materials and that kind of thing. And and the ADA will all be reviewed, but we we anticipate a very accelerated review for the for the streeteries, that anybody who's not building above six feet, you know, really has very minimal things that they need to submit in order to make this, to make their streetery part of the program.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you. And I'll just add, when we put in the Parklets, the city put in the Parklets years ago, I can't remember if it's years ago, they just quickly popped up and it was something we talked to our counterparts and our other cities and towns about. So we talked about formalizing it, and I remember talking to Director O'Leary and Victoria, like, just write something up and turn it in, you know, let's just get it going. And they were very incredibly polite because there were so many department, department reviews or so many aspects of this that I had never actually really thought through. It's like, once again, San Rafael really shows up and is thoughtful and deliberate. And when I'm reading in the IJ about other cities and towns kind of trying to find their way, like, we should, they should just copy us here. And really, hats off to DPW, to Danielle, to Victoria, to police and fire and Jim Myers and Parking, like, it really was a cross departmental project. And it was just one of those things, I, it really was like the aha moment about how complex it was. I think we had the finance department talked about it because there was a financial component as well. And the costs that were brought forward, there was a lot. What was just presented and you went through it in just a few minutes, not saying that you slated it at all, but it shows how well thought out it was. Everyone's like, oh, yeah, that makes sense, you know, having the waving and having the phased. So again, I couldn't be more proud of this program. We all want the same thing, which is to activate either the downtown or up in North San Rafael or East San Rafael, and this is a citywide program. And this is solid, like, this is something we can get behind. And we can, you know, package it and sell it to our neighbors, but they want to, hey, I was going to name other cities and towns, but I won't do that. But anyway, so thank you. I mean, this is fantastic. And the other piece that I really appreciate is that you worked with grandfathering in the ones that were already there. That was one that I know I pushed really hard on that, because people had already invested time and resources in it and even they're a little bit grandfathered in. So really appreciate how you worked both with this program and with those individual restaurant owners, because it would have been really easy to say, just tear them out. And and we opted not to do that. We took the harder route. So have a better product. So so thank you, thank you. Mary Beth is over here wordsmithing the additional tool that we want to be able to give you guys.
Okay, I've got two of them, two additional tools. Additional authorization in addition to the recommendations brought forward by staff.
Slow, slow, from really fast.
I haven't even gotten to those. In addition to the recommendations brought forward by staff, the following authorizations are presented. First, where a streetery is being used, we authorize staff to require commitment from the owners to move toward compliance with the new standards or remove the streetery within 30 days. Item two, for unused streeteries, we authorize our staff to order removal of the unused streetery within 30, with 30 days notice to the owner.
Councilmember Hill?
I have a question. Did we also want to authorize funding of that removal?
Yeah, that's good. And and to provide.
At the expense of the city.
That might be true. How how would you like that to to be worded?
Well, how about staff has a gist of what we're doing? And you all, right, City Manager Schutz, you have enough to go forward with?
I do. I would just want to see if Neera had any issues that she wanted to flag. And if she does not, then I think we're ready to move forward.
Neera, our acting city attorney tonight, there she is.
I do not. Thank you, City Manager.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Could I, yes, check with Director Gary if he has any feedback or any other director about this? Sorry.
I I was just mentioning to the city manager that 30 days to commit to the program and start moving forward, I think, is is ambitious. People that are not using their streeteries, I think, is very reasonable to remove them within 30 days. But if we said some 60 days or, or, you know, by September 1st or something like that, I think that would give us a chance to get our, you know, act together, so to speak, now that we're, we have the council's approval, move forward, and then we could contact the the owners, let them know what the new requirements are, give them a chance to digest, let them know what the process is going to be. It'll take us a little while to get the processes in place for moving to the program. So I'd appreciate a little more time there.
And they want us to complete this agenda item. I I think staff has it.
We do. And and we are going to be back in front of you again on this item, because this item is approving the program and everything that we're, what we're building around the guidelines. The part that you're not approving tonight is actually setting the formal fees.
Okay.
So we are looking for your input on those, which we've gotten some input. But that has to come back in an ordinance. And so we'll be putting that on future agendas. So I was just bringing that up because that may be a good time to report back to you and say, here's what we found through that initial assessment.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Bushy?
So with those additional directives, I move that we accept the report and approve the staff recommendation on the streetery program guidelines.
Second, moved in second and roll call place?
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yann Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Directors, awesome swan song. Tag team, that was amazing. Thank you very much. It was awesome. Okay, the last item on our agenda, administration, Administrative Service Director Atiya Haid will be presenting the final citywide proposal budget, proposed budget, my glasses on, for 2022, 2023. So we'll swing our attention over this direction. Or this direction, I guess we'll have, I don't know if we're going to have slides. All righty, we are ready for you, Nadine.
All right, thank you. Gosh, that felt like it took an eternity. Pulling stuff up onto the screen again. So thank you so much for having me, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm really excited to be here in front of you and not behind a camera and a computer. So this is great. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget with the goal of adoption by the end of the presentation. All right, so as part of the presentation, I'll first provide you with an update on fiscal year 2122, year to date performance. We'll go over the goals and objectives, in which I'll turn it over to Vedica Ahuja, Product Manager on our Digital Service and Open Government Team. And then she'll pass the baton back to me and I'll dive into the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget. We'll look at proposed personnel and childcare adjustments, review GAN limits, and I'll recommend we adopt two resolutions related to the report. As always, I try not to inundate you with all the details included in the 18 page staff report, but rather go over this massive undertaking through an executive summary lens, leaving time for you to ask questions at the end. So the last time we reported to you on the status of the budget was a few months ago in March, and this is pertaining to the current year budget, fiscal year 2122. We reported higher than expected revenues, mostly in sales tax, and we requested an increase in appropriations, mostly around public safety, overtime, things like that. At this time, the activity through April 2022, we believe that revenues are forecasted to increase slightly, approximately $239,000, so 0.3%. And then in terms of expenses, we recently completed our biannual, that's every other year, actuarial studies for our workers' compensation and general liability programs. These studies are conducted by a third party actuary professional, and the purpose of the study is to assess the city's liability, current and ongoing. For workers' comp, given an uptick in claims with a higher than average severity, so claims are basically grouped in 0 to 50,000, 50,000 to 100,000. So in 2021, we experienced a higher than average severity of the claims. We are seeing an increase of $2.1 million of future liabilities related to the workers' comp fund. For the general liability, the adjustment is mild, it's in the amount of 0.6 million. And it's really essentially just an adjustment for a two year period, which is not alarming. So the total effect to expenses is an increase of 2.7 million. Therefore, at year end, staff may request an increase in appropriations for this, but the goal, as always, is to absorb some of it or all of it through current year savings. If we're able to do that, the current estimated net results of 1.3 million will increase respectively. So we don't know what that looks like as of yet, as we're still in June. So we don't know what that looks like as of yet, as we're still in June. But you know, um, expenses and things, invoices don't come in, there's a lag there. And as soon as we know, we'll, we'll determine whether or not we can absorb some or all of it. And then lastly, as we continue to close out the year and report back to you in September, our hope is to recommend an update to our emergency reserve fund policy. The current policy calls for a minimum target, uh, reserve level at 10% of general expenditures. The goal and what's recommended by GF O A is to increase this to as high as 17%. And although we won't, may not be able to increase it to 17% in one full swoop, we will continue to work on that. So what's in store for the next few months? Well, staff have their hands full finishing out the year, completing the preliminary year-end financials, which we'll be presenting to you in September. We're also preparing for the audit, working through the audit with the auditors and then reporting back to council. So we're definitely planning on staying busy. Uh, let's now transition to the fiscal year 2223 budget. Budget goals, um, in which Vetika will go over our policy focus areas and what we're doing to measure our progress.
Welcome, Vetika.
Nice to meet you. I think it's your first meeting that you're presenting at. It is, it is. Thank you for having me. It's great to be here, Mayor Kate, Vice Mayor and council members. Um, and Nadine, thank you for the introduction. Um, my name is Vetika. I am a product manager on the digital services team. And I'm going to present how we plan to measure our progress towards our stated policy areas. So as you all know, last year, the city council created four new policy areas to highlight the city's overarching priorities. Um, and these policy areas have carried on to the next fiscal year. And, and last year, along with the policy focus areas, the city also identified two major needs. The first was to be able to measure progress made towards our goals and objectives within the policy focus areas. And the second was to measure how short-term projects impact, um, progress towards long-term policy objectives. So in other words, we want to know, are we moving the needle with our work? So to start addressing these needs, um, so Nadine, you can hit the next slide. There we go. To start addressing these needs, um, city staff from across departments have spent the last six months, discussing performance measurement practices and learning about that, and have worked together to identify 15 key indicators that align with the city's policy focus areas and can be used to measure progress towards our big picture policy goals. So I'll review these indicators in a couple of slides. Um, so first I'll review, kind of, we'll step back and, and talk about where we are on our performance measurement journey. Um, so the city so far has completed these first two tasks in this roadmap. We've identified priorities already in the form of our policy focus areas. And we've articulated broad qualitative goals for, for each policy area. So for example, for our housing and homelessness policy area, our stated goal is to create new housing, keep people in their homes and use a housing-first model. So, and then as I've said, we spent the last six months kind of, uh, socializing these, um, these management practices and identifying key metrics. So at this point, we're at the stage of bringing in data. So over, and over the next year, we'll move through the next stages as listed. Um, in terms of bringing in data, we'll start collecting and analyzing data about the 15 metrics we've chosen. And we'll establish a baseline, um, for these metrics. And, um, and that baseline might be fiscal year, it might be 2020, 2021 or 2022. All of that is still up for discussion among the directors. So once we have a baseline, um, we'll sit down and together as, as directors and staff, and we'll ask, analyze and learn from the data. Um, so the directors and data experts on staff will assess the data quality for each metric. Um, if the data seems inaccurate, we'll figure out how we might be able to improve it. And if we can't improve it, we'll choose another, a different metric with better data quality. We'll also investigate how has the data been changing over time and why? And then this will help us create a logic model for each of the metrics if it's possible to do so. So basically we want to articulate how our short-term projects and initiatives should ultimately move the needle on each of these metrics. After that, we will set targets and take action. So for each of the metrics, we'll set measurable, specific, short-term, um, targets and long-term stretch goals, informed by the baseline, the trend lines, and then the projects and the initiatives that we're doing to move the needle on these metrics. And then finally, and most importantly, we'll course correct and improve. So my team and we'll provide staff with regular updates about the key metrics. And, um, as well as supporting data that will provide context around the metrics. Um, and then staff will use that data to inform decision-making and improve processes and performance. So that's the journey. And so now I'll dive into the 15 metrics. I'll give a really quick, brief interview overview of the metrics. Um, you will have them in the staff report, the appendix of the staff report. Um, and I'll, I'll just mention, I'm not the, the content expert in any of these metrics really. It was chosen by staff. So if you have questions, um, we'll take them at the end and I, and if I can't answer them, I'll note them down and ask the, the content experts. Um, so for economic recovery, uh, the, which is building back our economy stronger and more resilient than before. The four metrics staff has chosen, um, is foot traffic downtown, the number of approved business license applications, revenue of local businesses, and the occupancy rate of storefronts downtown. For the racial equity, uh, policy area, the first metric here is created by the census bureau and is essentially a community resilience score that combines data about 10 resilience-related metrics. Um, so we'll compare the scores in majority of people of color census tracts to the majority white census tracts in San Rafael. Um, the second metric is diversity of the city workforce. And the third is the average business revenue in majority people of color census tracts versus majority white census tracts. Um, I'll just mention here that we are in the process of an equity audit. Um, and that audit may result in tracking additional metrics in this category. Um, for sustainability, climate change and disasters, um, we have two sustainability metrics here, greenhouse gas emissions and percent of residents and businesses composting. And then we have two climate change and disasters metrics. First is present of, percent of properties in compliance with citywide standards to reduce wildfire risk. The second is percent of residents signed up for emergency alerts. Lastly, for housing and homelessness, we have two homelessness metrics here and two housing. Uh, for homelessness metrics, we have the number of tents or structures and encampments and the number of people transitioned to supportive housing. And for the housing metrics, we have housing units entitled by unit income level and housing units produced by, uh, housing units produced by unit income level. And the second is number of deed restricted affordable units. So for housing here, again, we have one for, uh, keeping people in homes and one for building homes. Um, and again, just to reiterate, next steps, we'll start collecting data, analyzing it. And I will work on automating updates and creating dashboards and reports for staff to look at regularly. Um, we'll tie initiatives to each of the indicators if possible and set short-term and long-term targets. We'll monitor progress and drive performance improvement with that information. Um, and we'll present to council progress against these metrics at least twice a year at our mid-year budget meeting and our final end of year budget meeting. So thank you. And I'll take questions, um, along with Nadine after the presentation. So Nadine, I'll kick it back to you. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Vetika. That was the most interesting part of the budget presentation. So I will now have to continue. Um, all right. So I'd like to first start by expressing gratitude for our whole San Rafael city team for the effort, analysis and collaboration that they put into this budget process. Von Bach, our accounting manager is the driver. She's instrumental in managing the budget calendar, working departmentally with all of our different, um, budget managers and our innovative directors to meet the deadlines and finalize the numbers. And then once that's complete, you'd think it would be over. But she actually turns the package over to Sean Plate, who is our principal accountant, and Claire Coleman, our senior management analyst. And they put the finishing touches on it, which take a few weeks because it's really packaging the whole thing and reviewing and analyzing. So it's a feat and, uh, I couldn't be more proud of the outcome. And then further thanks to you, Mayor Kate and council members for your support and the allocation of resources towards the city goals and objectives. And then to our city manager and assistant city manager for their continued guidance and leadership. You've seen this before, but just a preview of the budget calendar, I won't go through all of this, but really just want to highlight that in February, the receipt of the N-Psera contribution rates really drives where we have the ability to, um, work on additional projects or not, just based on something that's completely out of our control. The, uh, contribution rates, the money that we pay in N-Psera can oftentimes be daunting. It's a large amount and, um, based on that, it can or cannot free us up to do, you know, out of the ordinary things with our revenues. And so really, uh, that's the budget calendar. We're basically doing budget all year long. It's a lot of fun and we enjoy it because we do get to work with our colleagues and, um, council, of course. So jumping into the, um, detail, what you see here is a summarized view of the citywide budget funds and then the forecasted sources and uses. I encourage you to peruse exhibit one, uh, for the details is we have over 50 funds. And approximately 20 of them are made up in the special revenue grant trust portion. So it's really interesting to take a look at all of them. For the general fund, sources exceed uses, which is what we like to see as this means we have a surplus. The proposed surplus is expected to be approximately $2.4 million. This is however, before allocating the, uh, funds towards the emergency reserve that we do every year per policy. If we look at the general plan, this is funded through a charge from community development fees and funds are currently going towards the general plan 2040. This is one of those funds where we accumulate over several years of fund balance. And then those savings are used for current year expenses. So although the uses exceed the sources, we do have prior year savings, which is what we call an accumulation and fund balance. And then we've got our special revenue funds. These are mostly restricted in nature. They're inclusive of gas tax funds, stormwater, paramedic tax, wildfire prevention and more. If these aren't breaking even, it's due to the timing of money coming in and going out. And there's also oftentimes, uh, reserves or, you know, a fund balance from prior years to cover the, um, portion that is not breaking even. The parking fund is one that I wanted to talk about specifically because the parking fund has normally been self-sufficient. And for the, ever since COVID hit, so for the past two and a half years, this fund has not been self-sufficient. It's experienced losses and it has had to dig into its reserves. Uh, the first year, we, we understood that. And the second year, we continued to analyze and work through it thinking, oh, well, this is happening. So now we'll be good. Or we saw an uptick in, in garage, um, monthly fees, and so that should take over. But really it's, it's been, you know, kind of going up and then going right back down. And so what I'm showing you here is the worst case scenario of what could happen. But we are seeing higher uses and, um, not as high sources. We do have available fund balance, but that fund balance is expected to run out. And so, um, what we would like to do is come back to you in another quarter or so and make recommendations about, um, you know, increasing parking revenue fees potentially. Uh, we're still looking at all of that, but the current trend is not sustainable. And then we have our internal service funds. These are funds that cover our vehicle purchases, our workers' comp and general liability that we talked about earlier, our pension obligation, uh, debt, our computers, safety equipment, maintenance of city-owned property and our buildings. And so what you see here, and it's many, many funds, but what you see is that the sources again are less than the uses. And that is because we have fund balance available. And it's things like we've been putting money away to purchase, you know, a new engine. And we've done that over a 10-year period. And so now we are utilizing that money that we've saved and it's hitting our uses. And then lastly, the public safety facilities. So we are currently in the process of, um, we're in construction on 54 and 55, which is super exciting. And we're expecting to, um, incur a lot of the expenses in fiscal year 2122. But it's probably about $4 million that we'll see go over into the next year. The reason that you don't see sources there is again, because it's supported from fund balance. And the measure E portion that would normally go into this fund, that is, it comes into the general fund first and then we transfer it into this fund. But it now is paying our debt obligation now that, uh, principal is also part of the payment. And so it just goes into the general fund and it goes right back out of the general fund, which is why you're not seeing it. Anything in excess, we would put right back into this fund. So the general fund does not keep it. So a little bit about general fund revenues, and I'm sorry that chart is not as big as I'd like it to be, but we can talk about it. Well, you can only imagine in trying to develop a revenue forecast during unpredictable times with rising inflation, supply and labor shortages, international devastation, and then looming recessionary predictions was quite complicated. Uh, we got through it, but it's not something that I'd like us to do year over year. In order to gather the best information we have, we obtained major revenue forecasts from third-party professionals. We reviewed current and historical economic trends for the city. And we also ran several scenarios through our forecasting model. With that, we came up with or came out to revenues of approximately 97.6 million. And so the, the chart that you can't see as well, um, the sales and use tax is approximately 47% of our total revenues and property tax is approximately 25% of our total revenues. So I'd like to talk about those first. Our projected property tax increase is 6%, which is still pretty good. This is due to an expected increase in two areas. The first area is secured property tax. And some people might be asking, well, why would property tax be increasing when we're hearing about housing prices softening? And that's because there's always a one-year lag. So what we're collecting in 2223 is for values in 21 and 22. And then the second area that we're experiencing increases in for property taxes is ERAF. ERAF stands for Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. A portion of property tax revenues goes to ERAF to support local districts, local school districts. So when the amount contributed to ERAF is more than the minimum cost of funding that local school, the excess funds go back to the county who then returns them to the city or special districts. And so we're expecting a slight increase in that. Yeah. I thought you might appreciate that. Yeah. And then you'll notice a minimal increase in sales and use taxes compared to the current budget. This number is inclusive of current trends and economic uncertainty ahead. Although it's one of the smallest increases we've seen in a while for sales and use tax, I can assure you that we will be back throughout the year to give you updates and recommended adjustments based on actuals. Most other revenues are projected to increase by approximately three to 4%, which is consistent with trends from prior years. And I would just like to add that although uncertainty continues to be the one certainty in economic forecasts these days, we do not have strong enough market indicators that we can rely on to further discount revenues. So we don't want to be conservative in, um, forecasting our revenues. We want to base it on the information that we have at this point. But as we enter the fiscal year, we'll be reporting back to council on any adjustments deemed necessary. And of course, increasing the emergency reserve policy and holding, uh, holding off on allocating the proposed surplus for fiscal year 2223 are two things we can do to are two things we can do to mitigate risks that might come with larger revenue losses. Expenses. So we are forecasting expenses of $95.3 million. This is one of our highest dollar amounts and it just speaks to the city growing, which is great, but also inflation and, you know, just a real difficult time obtaining supplies and managing the expenses of these supplies. So although we continue to tread conservatively when it comes to expenses, revenues are consistently improving and the city has returned to pre-COVID service levels. So expenses are back to their baseline. This year, for fiscal year 22, 23, the year-over-year increase in expenditures, including operating transfers, is approximately 4.6% when compared to the current budget. This is inclusive of accounting for inflationary pressures that we're already experiencing. And in some areas, we're even experiencing hyperinflation, which is where it's an uncontrollable rise for a period of time. And then we're also strategically working on adding key initiatives that move our goals and objectives forward. And so those expenses are going into our budget as well, of course. This report also serves as an annual pension funding update, of which the city's unfunded liability of $27 million, down from $148 million last year, represents a funded ratio of 95.8%. This is super exciting and we can't count on it to continue in future years. I know. The city does have a pension obligation bond that's set to mature in 2025. For personnel, we are proposing a net three FTE count increase and they're in the areas of community development and recreation. And of course, these are also being driven by our focus areas and our goals and objectives. The chart here that you can't see is actually a really interesting one. We have yet to get back to our 445 peak FTE headcount. And not to say that we're trying to get back there necessarily because we are innovating, we're doing things more effectively and efficiently, but we're also doing a lot with the current staff levels that we have. And so we're proposing an increase of three headcount. I did want to say that that lighter shading is fixed-term employees and fixed-term employees are employees who are with the city for a period of time, a set duration. And the majority of our fixed-term employees are funded by Measure C, which is the wildfire vegetation management program. And then we've got limited adjustment and executive compensation to reduce compaction issues. So we briefly talked about the emergency reserves. We are in adherence with the city's reserve policy, which is 10% of expenditures. These numbers could change based on how we end fiscal year 21, 22, but I'm not concerned about meeting the policy requirement. And as mentioned earlier, we will be coming back to you in September to propose an increase to the reserve level. These are some of our other larger funds. Emergency medical services, in which a $5 increase was approved back in April of '22. Our capital projects fund, which was, is often referred to as CIP, which was presented on May 16th. And I did not include in many, any slides in this presentation because we had walked away with your guidance and didn't have many changes. So there are no changes in that CIP, other than this great amazing booklet of what we've done, what we're currently doing and what we plan on doing. So I really encourage you to read the whole thing because it's just amazing. Measure A is open space. We were not sure that this was going to be approved and as of June 7th, it was. And so you will see that we have expenditures coming, proposed in our budget, but that's from a prior year fund balance. And so revenues should start, I think we get them in October of '22. And so at some point during mid-year, we will ask for potentially an increase in appropriations or we'll just report out on what we believe our revenues is going to be. Measure D, this is the library parcel fund and we increase it by CPI annually up to a certain amount. And so that staff report was on consent, I think, last council meeting. Measure C, the Marin wildfire prevention. And then parking enterprise fund, which we've talked about. Community services, so it's recreation and it's also childcare. So we call them community services, but there's two parts to them. And so childcare is yet another one that we will talk about here soon because the expenses are outrunning the revenues. It wouldn't be a budget presentation without talking about ARPA. There's really not much here to report to you that you're not aware of, but essentially we have either obligated or expended $4 million of our current $16 million. 3.2 million of that is related to the San Quentin pump. And then we have been, you know, really putting this money towards projects and infrastructure. So the main concept that I'd like to continue to drive home here is that when it comes to the ARPA funds, we received $16 million that we were eligible to apply towards general fund expenditures. And so that is essentially what we have done, but council has asked us or has, you know, authorized us or assigned us to take those savings because those would have hit the bottom line. Those would have been net income. And so to take those and apply them specifically towards our policy focus areas and our infrastructure projects. And I think that's a great thing. I've seen it in other cities where it just goes into the general fund and it gets used for general operations and other types of things. So I'm really proud that we're able to do it in the way that we are. So childcare fees, I had mentioned earlier. Due to increasing costs, inflation, challenging hiring environment, we are asking for, we are recommending for 5% increase in fees, except the registration fee. We do not think that this will come as a surprise to any of our current childcare individuals, their parents. And we are still well beyond other peers. And so that would go in effect in August. And then the GAN appropriations, this is essentially a legal requirement here of how much we can appropriate. And so we're always trying to make sure that we are abiding to it. We have a lot of room. Our new calculated limit is $170 million. The appropriations subject to the limit, and this isn't just general fund, this is citywide, which is why you're seeing these large numbers. The appropriations subject to the limit is $92 million approximately. So we're still well below the legal limit at about $79 million. What's next? So this is the part that I get really excited about because, like we were saying earlier, we don't stop. We continue to move forward on all of these initiatives. So we'd like to remain focused and committed to advance the city's goals and objectives while also measuring and reporting on the progress. We are monitoring economic trends and signs of recessionary times in which we will come to council. We'll return to council with parking fund revenue recommendations and will also continue to expend ARPA funds as projects are brought forth to council. And then lastly, we will continue to assess the city's financial ability to provide and/or maintain competitive compensation so that we may continue to attract and retain highly talented employees who provide exceptional public service. And with that, I will leave you with this beautiful picture and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Nadine. Thank you, Vedica. We'll start with questions, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I actually enjoy these updates. I like the budget reviews. I know you're being very, you're being conservative on the property tax piece. I'm actually, is that really the guideline that we're getting right now for like next year? So if this, if this year's property tax increased by 6% and that was, it's reflective of the prior year, then this, then FY '23, '24, we would probably see an increase as well. Yeah? Okay.
Yes, potentially.
Because of, because we know, we know, all right.
It won't be a decrease.
It won't be a decrease. Right. So we'll see, we'll see some. And then the other question I have is with the state, is there anything else that's being talked about at the state level to coming back down to the cities? In terms of whether, like not necessarily an ARPA situation, but is there any additional funding that we're seeing? Because the state had such a large surplus.
Yeah, so there isn't general funding. There's certainly a lot of funding that's coming down from the state based on their initiatives and that's included in the staff report, but not the ARPA type of, you know, general fund funding. The other thing with the state is that although they had estimated a surplus, they're also decreasing that slightly. So they're still expecting to see gains, but not to the extent that they had originally forecasted.
Okay, okay, great. And Vedica, thank you for the report on the policies. I love tying the work that we're doing back to the policies. Because to me, that's where it really hits in terms of, are we putting our money to where what we've set our priorities are? So thank you for that and I look forward to seeing the reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. That was great. I had a question, a couple of questions around the parking fund. I know that the analysis is forthcoming. In the way that it's characterized, it says, you know, fee increase or expense reduction. Are there any other kind of permutations we can explore? I mean, I know with parking, there are only so many things we can consider, but when I think about the structured and the deferred maintenance, is there anything else that we could explore beyond just fees? I know it seems like the straightforward one, but are there any other opportunities to help restore balance with the fund?
That's a great question. And I will say, we will continue to look at expenses. We are planning on decreasing expenses to any extent we can, which is why I also bring up the revenues piece because I think that that, expenses will not alone take care of this issue. And we will also be looking at the infrastructure that we have in parking. So parking garages, what could we be doing with those if we're not able to utilize them for parking? That's definitely something that we'll be, you know, looking into. Nothing is off the table and it's something that we have just started the analysis of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agarwala.
You know, thank you so much for the report. It's very clear. So thank you. My question actually is following up with Councilmember Hill around parking. And I guess I will look forward to getting more information. I was just trying to understand what's the percentage of facilities and infrastructure versus personnel. And it's something that you don't have to answer right now because I recognize I'm putting you on the spot. So, but maybe when you bring back, because I feel that that is the one department that I always can learn more about it, you know, where are the fees versus the expenses in terms of personnel as well? So yeah, that was actually my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushi.
Okay, I will follow up on the lead of my colleagues and then return to the metrics question. The parking program and the childcare program are two programs that have always been self-sustaining. It looks like parking has moved to being in about a 30% deficit. That's a huge change. And I think we would want to understand what caused that and then use every ounce of creative powers that we have to come up with product options for parking garages and to keep in close alignment with our business community as well. I don't know that raising parking costs, prices in downtown San Rafael is something that will go over very well with the business community. So we need to come up with a way to solve this because we can't put over a million dollars from a general fund in, every year to equalize that. So that's a comment. The question, I wasn't clear on where we were on childcare. With the 5% raise, are we now balanced?
Yes, the 5% raise should get us to the levels that were approved by council.
Okay, great. Thank you. So there's only one problematic. Okay, now on to the fun stuff, the metrics. I love metrics. I really liked the ones that you've proposed because they're very simple and very easy to measure. That said, I've been involved in way too many metrics and measurement in the business community and they can take on a life of their own and completely distract. What is your plan for to keep judgment involved in these? Because maybe your metrics are wrong. Maybe they aren't measuring what you want. You know, there's a whole lot of data out there. Most of it's irrelevant and it requires judgment to find the right one. So how are you going to do that?
Yeah, I think the key there is bringing in the data experts and bringing in the folks from the departments who understand the data and really sit down and look at it and ask, first, is this data providing helpful information? And is it correct? And if it's not correct, like I said, we won't use the metric. If it's, if we can adjust what the metric is measuring or the data collection or somehow analyze that metric differently, I'll be the one who will do those calculations and will do that. But we have tried to keep the metrics, you know, we've tried to limit them to, you know, 15. And so I think the number will be very reasonable to look at to start with. And again, I'll really rely heavily on the data experts to provide their feedback and, and yeah, ask whether the data is important and helpful.
And well, it's more than that. I have every confidence that anyone who's employed by the city of San Rafael is quite capable of adding and subtracting. But it's the judgment that it involves. This may be absolutely correctly tabulated, but absolutely useless. It requires the judgment of the, like the directors that are unfortunately walking out the door very soon to look at those things and say, is this really capturing what we want? So I guess I encourage you to think at the strategic level. Is this actually accomplishing our goals? And I know it's hard when you get wrapped up in all your spreadsheets, but.
No, I think that was the process of socializing performance measurement as a strategy and really part of picking these metrics was asking directors, what is the north star of the department's work? And we'll make sure to keep that strategic, the strategy, the end goal is, is to improve processes and performance. So we'll make sure the metrics are to that purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. I know in September, we'll be talking more about the emergency reserve policy. So having been part of those discussions at 10%, and I went 17, definitely made me sit up. So I look forward to that conversation. I wanted to follow up on the parking conversation. And how has deferred maintenance rolled into that? Because we're just talking about street, you know, personnel, to Mike's point, you know, the inflow and outflow, but there are some big costs out there. So maybe when you come back, I don't want to speak to that now, when you come back, but how does that get pulled in?
Absolutely. So first, with the emergency reserve, we will likely not be asking you or be recommending that you increase it to 17%. That is a goal. That's something that's generally, you know, the practice, best practice. But we understand that it will take time to get there. If we move a percent or two, that's a good change. And so we'll be reviewing that fully and coming to you with a recommendation. And similarly with the parking fund, you know, it's not that we're currently recommending that we increase fees. We understand the sensitivity to that and there's so much more analysis and community engagement that needs to happen before we can make any recommendations. Essentially, everything is on the table. Deferred maintenance is part of the expense that the parking fund incurs and it is a lot. And so we will be coming to you with, you know, some real analysis. And so we will be coming to you with, you know, some real analysis and, and it's just detail behind all of our recommendations that will allow you to make an informed decision. And when it comes to parking, they are running pretty lean with personnel. And so there are things that have been happening recently that are adding to this deficit is there's a lot of activity where, you know, things are being broken in there. And so then they're having to continually fix it. And it's multiple things in different areas. Jim was telling me that our parking meters in a certain location were cut off. They just cut them off at the, at the end or at the bottom, right? So there, there's lots of different things that are happening that are contributing to the increase in expenses. And so that's something that we're identifying and then trying to fix. So how do we prevent that from happening? And then additionally, due to the reduction in revenues, we're trying to find other ways to continue to be sustainable.
Yeah. We look forward to that presentation, that further conversation. On childcare, and I appreciate Mary Beth's question about this, make, does it make us whole? Is there a sliding scale? Because you take five percent, is there a sliding scale for people that are enrolling in our programs? So people of lower income have a different fee that they pay. And I know you had the chart that looked pretty straightforward, but.
Yeah, our pickleweed program is actually supported by grants. And so that is the program that allows for the reduced fees.
And that's only at pickleweed, though it's not at our other centers.
That's right. Correct.
We just know that childcare keeps, it makes it harder for women to enter the workforce. So as we're looking at that. Okay. Last question for Vedica, and I agree. You want to talk about metrics, you've got your counsel. We love talking about metrics. And it's something really tying them together. I am really impressed at how clear it is to Mary Beth's point. It's just fantastic. So really appreciate the work to date. And you had already mentioned the equity audit. We have hired those consultants, so making just, and you, you did mention that. We want to run that by them to make sure, hey, these are the right two metrics. The, the company we hired, the consultants have been doing this work for a really long time. And that same approach, would we do it also for our economic development consultant that we just hired? So it asks them about the metrics, and especially because, I mean, Cosmon's their name, and they use the Placer AI technology, which your first indicator, that's like, they literally could push a button, they could just spit that out. So I was excited about that, because I think it's very, very accessible, but I would want to ask them the same question. Which I just, you know, you're, I mean, of course you are, but I just want to.
Yeah, we'll talk to both of them about metrics.
Yeah, yeah, and we're excited about that. Thank you. So with that, I don't see any other questions. There might be more that come forward, but I will go ahead and see if anyone in the chambers would like to provide input. I see staff and family members, so that's awesome. You're more than welcome to provide input. I will go to the virtual, see if there's any input.
We do have a couple of hands raised. I'm just going to remind everyone, if you'd like to provide public comment, you can do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom.
Hello, this is Amy Likeover. Councilmembers, mayor, city staff members. I address you on a scorching midday, mid-June day, one hundred and one degrees as I write. Those outside are looking for shade, and those inside are attempting to cool down. An apt moment to address the ongoing work on the street tree ordinance under Public Assets Goal D. And to ask you to extend that work to include implementation of key remaining street tree policies as part of this year's goals and objectives. We thank you for including the street tree ordinance and last year's goals. In response, local conservation and community leaders, Bill Carney, Gina Silvestri, Kate Powers, Judy Schreitman, Victoria DeWitt, and I have lent our expertise this past year researching national and regional street tree best practices. We appreciated the opportunity of then sharing our work with Bill Guerin and others at DPW, culminating in the Twenty-First Century Street Tree Ordinance that will come before you later this summer. We ask the council to move forward with implementing, implementing the remaining portions of the General Plan 2040 street tree policies, including a street tree inventory and a street tree master plan. Perhaps most importantly, we request that you move forward with the General Plan's urban forestry policy from the conservation and climate change element to protect, maintain, and expand San Rafael's tree canopy. By implementing these general plan policies together this year, we can achieve a comprehensive tree plan for San Rafael, which brings me back to today's temperature and looking for shade. Climate change makes our collective work urgent. Our group stands ready to help with the next steps this year. Please call on us, and let's make this hot topic a priority.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi again, this is Bill Carney, representing Sustainable San Rafael. We want to add our voices to Amy's urging you to extend your street tree ordinance goal to include the street tree inventory and master plan called for by General Plan 2040, putting us on track to implement the comprehensive urban forestry policy outlined in the conservation and climate change element of the general plan. You've already assembled and involved citizenry, which is the biggest asset you need to continue that work to successful completion. We also want to thank you for continuing your focus area goals addressing sustainability, climate change, and disasters. We're looking forward to the start of climate adaptation planning for the threat of sea level rise in the canal, which is our community that's most vulnerable to climate impacts. We especially welcome the emphasis on reducing the causes of climate change by burning fewer fossil fuels per your EV strategy and greenhouse gas reduction goals. We would request that the two thousand and five baseline for tracking greenhouse gas reductions be augmented with a nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety measurement, which is how the, the state and the, our own CCAP measures our goals. Following on the June sixth Marin Grand Jury Report, we also urge you to specify building electrification as part of that greenhouse gas reduction goal for the coming year. The work is already underway. And this is the largest opportunity for greenhouse gas reduction that's now available to local governments. We urge your bold action in adding that to your goals. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill.
I see no other public comments. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I'll close the public comment. So I did hear a question in the comments, and that was really, how do we fund the different General Plan 2040 policies? I know the callers specified the ones that they felt we should move forward, but there are many, many, many programs in the general plan. So City Manager Shuth, maybe you can speak to that and just share with the community how we do fund.
Sure, and I'll ask Community Development Director Judy C. to add anything that she'd like after I address the question. The couple of the comments were about the tree policy, and Amy Likeover is, is of course exactly right. Been working with Public Works and working on a draft street tree ordinance that would come to the council this summer. And that's what we've been saying would be a first step in many other actions, which leads to the General Plan Urban Forestry Policy. I think there is no one particular funding source for those policies. It kind of depends on the policy itself. Some of them are, don't have a great amount of funding that'd go with them, depending on what it is. Or it could be like an affordable housing policy that, that requires millions of dollars. So I, I think it's a wide range, depending on the specific policy. And the ones related to the trees specifically, I think are probably more related to the Public Works budget and just our overall tree maintenance and tree replacement. But maybe, Ally, if there's anything else you could want to respond to as it relates to the general plan.
Yeah, sure, so. So, you know, we have, in the general plan, we have the different elements that are under the responsibility by different departments. And so as we, you know, through the year, we come up with our, as you, your council comes up with the goals and objectives for the year, we, we look at opportunities for funding sources like City Manager Shuts was saying. And so housing is one of the examples we used. We also have your transportation programs that we have identified at the general plan. We have the Parks Master Plan that was part of the general plan, one of the programs in the general plan. So we identify which ones are important for that particular department and seek funding sources and prioritize within that, that department. And then every year, we are now obligated to provide you with an update on the progress of our general plan. And we are required to report that out to the state. So you'll be getting that on a regular basis moving forward.
And, and when will that be, that report out?
It's, so we have one that's coming this year, and it'll be a very basic report out, because we just adopted the general plan a year ago. But it'll be the same time of year that we report out on the annual progress report for housing. So it'll be kind of currently done.
Great, thank you, Director Judy C. And I'll just add that the goals and objectives are two-year. So we adopted them last year, and the council made a commitment to maintain the same goals and objectives for a variety of reasons, notwithstanding pandemic being one of them, changes in staffing and resources and things like that. And it has really enabled, I'm feeling it's really enabled the city and staff to have a direction, to not have a moving target that's always moving. And because we have the four new policy bucket areas, as Vedica just talked about, I mean, metrics, we're trying something new as we go. And so if we kept moving the goal line, it would be much harder for us to make sure that we're having the, the, the types of success that we want to have across the different areas. So I am happy to take other questions, or we can start with comments. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Yeah, so my question, I guess, is because we know that there is a lot of funding now at the federal level, at the state level, in terms of equity, in terms of, you know, climate change. How, and, and it goes back, I'm thinking about the, the transportation plan, for example, asking for a one FTE that is going to help us maybe look for those grants to apply. How are we keeping that as part of our budget? Are we looking into?
Is the question, how are we continuing to pursue grants through DPW? Is that the question at the federal and state level? Because I know that that is a big part, I think Lauren has left, but is, is that the question?
That is the question, I guess, for, I guess that would be the main way, because there are like so many different grants that they are coming our way. And I feel that we might want to expand, you know, our personnel to be able to take advantage of that. So yeah, I guess that's, are we keeping that into the budget? I'm thinking about the goals of equity and climate change, you know.
And as you're doing, I think one thing to the state, or hopefully do with their surplus, is to do the block grant program. So actually have that kind of format, which isn't as onerous. And I think the feds are looking at that too, because I think that's part of what probably going to say is how onerous that project.
I, I think, you know, our program has, has obvious ties to grants. The, the Recreation Master Plan is going to also identify grant opportunities through that plan. So there's a lot of opportunities for grant funding for DPW projects. You know, I, I meant to comment earlier on the, the comment that we need additional staffing. I think that was really a focus on having the ability to spend money in order to develop grants, because that's how you get grants, the, the process is onerous, as I think April said earlier. And we really need to be able to put the resources into that, whether it's in-house staff, which, you know, I know is very difficult to, to come by, or through grant application writers who do it for a living and are very good at it. We, we use several people to help us with those grants, and they are very effective at getting money for San Rafael for those things.
Yeah, no, it's an excellent point. Someone's getting that money, it might as well be San Rafael. Yes, indeed, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Comments, Vice Mayor?
No, I think it's, I, I'm really excited about the budget, the way it looks right now. It's nice to be able to be in a revenue positive situation. And I thank you for so much to everyone for building the budgets. I think pretty much as you get to one end, you start again. It starts immediately. So I really appreciate all the work that everyone did to put into this and look forward to moving it forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushi. No comments? Okay, Councilmember Maker?
No, I really want to appreciate it. I like especially the pension liabilities. I, it was a nice surprise, not a surprise, but really, thinking of other places is definitely like, like a great place to be. And also talking to other cities that they are actually in the red right now. It is really nice to see that we actually have a positive balance. So thank you very much, it's great.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Yes, and I know we did this last year, and I just continue to be grateful for, for everything you do, Director Ateha, to make sure that we continue to be vigilant on where we are. I think you use a lot of nuance in how you characterize things, I appreciate that. Or we know what we know, what we don't know, and what we're doing to make sure we figure out what we don't know and how frequently we can do that. So thank you for your continued service. And then Vedica, it was great to have you in chamber. I, I saw all the hallmarks today of what product management applied to city can look like. And so I look forward to continuing to see those patterns come forward and how the community would benefit from product management. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. And I'll just close out by saying, remember the COVID, it wasn't called this, the COVID Response Budget? Wasn't that, but right when COVID hit and how staff really stepped up to say, where can we tighten our belts? And my reaction to looking at this was like, okay, we've moved kind of past that. And where, right, belts were tightened, tightened, we were able to go back and compensate folks. And I want to say a normalizing, because I don't, I don't think the world's ever going to be normal in the way it was. But I, I don't know, I just, I was excited, I was very hopeful. And it wasn't just that it was, there's a surplus, of course, that was a big part of it. But, but really, we gotten kind of, kind of through that, because those were really uncertain times. We weren't sure what was going to happen to the sales tax. It weren't happening, TOT needs to come back. I mean, there's still some things that need to happen. It's not, we're not completely there yet. But to me, it really felt like we've made a big step in the right direction. And the uncertainty that we have felt, in spite of the fact that you said, there's always uncertainty when it comes to economic forecasts. But I really feel like that we're, we're on solid ground, and we have a plan going forward. Where a couple of years ago, we still had a plan going forward, but we weren't sure where we were going to end up. And I really like where we've ended up. So thank you, and I really appreciate the shout out that you gave to the team behind the scenes, because it is both your finance team, but it's also all the departments and all the directors that actually weigh in and help prioritize. You know, we're, we're a big city, you know, ninety-seven million bucks, that's a lot of dollars. And so it's really, we're incumbent upon the departments to give us the feedback and give us the input they have. So, so thank you for that. And with that, and Vedica, again, nice to have you here. We look forward to those updates. You know you're going to get a lot of feedback on, from this group, but it, it's fully supportive feedback. So with that, I will entertain a motion on this item. And actually, there's more than one, if I'm looking at this correctly.
So I'll do, it's the recommended action adopt resolution approving, is that the first one?
Yep.
Adopt resolution approving the citywide budget and capital improvement program for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, providing for the appropriations and expenditure of all sums set forth in the budget in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six million, one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and nine, authorizing an increase to city staff headcount, amending resolution one four nine five four regarding the compensation and working conditions of certain unrepresented executive management employees in approving a one-time five percent increase to childcare fees.
Second, moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushi.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedan Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Keith.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Next one on, it looks like the GAN appropriations.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To move that we adopt the resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three GAN appropriations limit at one hundred seventy million, seven hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushi.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedan Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Keith.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Okay, I think those are all the motions on that. Thank you, team. We have just one more item. We have San Rafael Successor Agency. Are there any items to be held from the consent calendar?
No.
I didn't know, okay, I'll open this to public comment. Everyone's going to run down, give comment. No one's running down, give comment on the successor agency. Are there any virtual commenters?
I see no hands raised, however, if we're calling in, you can press star nine. Or if you're on Zoom, you're welcome to press the raise hand feature, and I'll give you a moment. I see no public comment.
I move that we accept.
I'll close the public comment.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Bushi.
I move that we accept the successor agency quarterly investment report for the quarter ending March 31, 2022. Actually, I probably could just move the consent calendar.
That's okay, no, you were.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Bushi.
Aye.
Member Hill.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kurtz.
Aye.
Member Yedan Saladi.
Aye.
Chair Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. And as I promised, I don't know if we do a wave or like we stand up. Director Guerin, Director O'Leary, you two have made San Rafael a better place for you having been here. And I can't think of another way to say that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We look forward to seeing you at Dine Under Lights and our paths continuing to cross. So in their honor, this meeting is adjourned. I like to do this.